So if you're here, you're gonna have to listen to the rest of us, but there's nothing going on. Bruce is here, so we'll go. Okay. Uh, first item is, uh, Dearie Framing Corporation, TB 19-08. Please step up and sign in, please. Who wants to? Uh, does anybody interested in that project? Because I think there were some seats in front. If you want to move up, uh, this way you can hear a little bit better than what's going on.
Alex Goldberg. Berger.
Can you keep down the voice?
Mr. Chairman, John Atzl.
Excuse me, could you just please all be quiet? I really can't hear.
John Atzl, Atzl Nasher and Ziegler, uh, engineers for the project. And this is Mr. Goldberg, the owner of Dearie Framing.
Try this one.
Uh, we were here last month and, um, the board had some issues with the revised, uh, conservation easement. What we've done is we've taken another look at the plan. What we've, what we've done is we actually, the trees on the north property line where the old drainage system was gonna be, we decided to relocate that drainage system, thereby saving all those trees-
Big end of the mind.
Excuse me. People in the back, if you want, move to the front so you can hear.
You want to sit on the floor?
There are some seats up here. Excuse me. Sir, there are seats up here.
Put on a mic in the van.
Speak into the microphone, please.
The trees, the trees on the north side of the, of the property that were noted to be removed on the previous plan are now all gonna be saved and relocated to the proposed drainage system to a, uh, to an area that's already been cleared near the driveway. We've also supplied the correspondents from Peter Torgerson regarding their, uh, conservation easement and what we're doing with the plans.
I'm gonna rest. A lot of this has been read in priorly and there are some new information, uh, I'm gonna go through. I'm not gonna read all the items, um, if you're interested, there are copies of it on the desk. We're gonna read in all the items that are concerned, who can put it to the record. I'm not gonna read them all because some of them are just cooking bean, uh, items and, uh, we wanna keep it up to serve time, so we will, we will work on that. Uh, project review, uh, go additional comments beyond comments and everybody's over agency. James Swaven, no further comments. Department of Engineering, Management of Engineering, Bruce Peters.
Yeah, uh, we were, we were discussing the perk test last month when we were moving before the board and actually we contacted Mr. Peters about doing the perk test and he said we had to hold off because of the weather and the frost in the ground. So, um, I know it's this board's policy to require perk test for Mr. Peters' comments. Considering the time of year, we're ready to do the perk test, but we'd rather not hold up the approval of the site plan, considering there's already been a building permit issued for the property. We will do, we will do the perk test, so we have no issue doing it.
The perk tests are required over on the north side, correct?
Well, they'll be required where we're, where we relocate its drainage system near the driveway. That's where we'll perform that.
Right, so on the February 7th, uh, we did, uh, address the perk test, but not on the, uh, March 7th.
Now, it's number three on March 7th.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Rockland County Department of Framing has seven items that we stated, uh, February 7th. They may have been read in already, I'm not sure.
Yeah, all the letters, all the previous letters have been already written.
Okay, so we just those, those first two. Okay, um, we have a letter from Peter Torgerson, dated February 25th, here, sir. The above site is a single-family residence that is currently under construction. Back half of the site has been designated as a conservation easement. The applicant would like to obtain permission to remove four existing trees that are located directly behind the home, but within the easement, the existing easement, these trees are not visible to anyone driving along the road. The original site plan calls for a small detention base to be built at the east corner of the site. Currently proposed is an underground stormwater treatment system which will be installed next to the driveway in place, in a place that has already been cleared. This underground system will allow nineteen existing trees remain in place. These nineteen trees are all visible to the public as well to adjacent neighbors to the north and east. These changes to the site plan will benefit the public by preserving the forest habitat found in this part of town as well as eliminating the environment and those impacts created by construction in this home. That's all. Bruce Mandel. Let's see, change the plant test for our- Let's see, saving the trees, but see, that's where the last, uh, here. Nineteen. Nineteen? Nineteen trees. There are no checks and taking the fourth down behind it. However, uh, will be Rockland County Planning, the clearing of the conservation area of dead trees and brush, as far as I'm concerned, let's know. That was your number five in your, uh, summary, which you wanted to do to wrap that area, but can't be done under any circumstances. When I go, how's that gonna override Rockland County Planning?
Uh, if, if I may, under the original, on the original subdivision approval, the clearing of dead trees and brush was permitted, it's actually a map note on the sub- five subdivision plaque.
And what deals that?
To, uh-
Two thousand four. Different times and, uh, this time I've got to override Rockland County Planning on it. We'll need a, uh, super majority in order to do that. It's part of the ecosystem there. Um, now, on your map, you have under, you have a stockpile. It's landfill number three. You say it's piled topsoil and so you seed it. Uh, wasn't this leftover dirt from the construction excavation?
That's temporary, uh, topsoil stockpile for while the house is under construction and it has to be seeded to stabilize it until the house is completed. When the house is completed and the final grading is done, they will spread that topsoil on throughout the lot and use that for the new lawn.
And where in relationship to the other piles? It looks like one pile there. And that's all there is. Just one pile?
Yeah.
So that's the excavation soil?
No, that's, that's the topsoil stockpile. The excavation soil has been removed from the site.
Okay, this last meeting, I asked the question, uh, how are you going to fill in the conservation area? At which time you said that you're gonna use the dirt from the excavation site to fill it in. You haven't filled in the excavation, uh, in the conservation area that you requested, hopefully.
No.
All right, so then you're gonna have to bring in dirt, yeah?
No, we have to excavate with the private equipment that holds areas to the least of the excavation.
But that wasn't, uh, what you said last night, you said, I asked about the pile. So I just talked about it. No, when I asked about the pile, you said it was the excavation. Now, it's not the excavation, it's additional excavation, is what we're talking about. Uh, because this stuff, you know, I'm assuming, which everyone like to do, that if you need an additional dirt thrown in there to fill it in, you're gonna be using a tagged, uh, soil less required?
Yeah, any, if any material needs to be imported, it will follow the proper building department.
And, uh, I'm still going along with Bruce Peters that, uh, in order for the, uh, to know if that, uh, drainage system is proper and is working, there has to be a perk test. That's all I have to say at this time. I can't get a final, uh, I'm not gonna call for a final, uh, on this one without a perk test. I want to know the drainage systems don't work. It's a time when you're gonna put it in place, so we're gonna do a perk test. We did, uh, the same volume of work.
Yes, the perk, the drainage system has been, has been designed from the previous, same as the previous system that will hold all the volume, the required volume of water created from the additional runoff from construction of the home. If the soil out there is sandy, as I understand it, so we're gonna anticipate a bad perk, but if we do receive a bad perk, what we do is actually, we make the, uh, the drainage system larger due to the perk rate of being slower. So we can adjust the size of the drainage system based on what, what kind of perk rate we get from the soil.
An eyewitness, when we excavated for the foundation, the place is sand. It's like sand. We had water every day and the morning was gone, so I think, I'm not worried. I know this is way better than any perk test in the county.
Like sand or sand?
Okay, so I wanna thank you for listening to our comments last time, for saving as many trees as possible, uh, working with the, uh, movement of the, the line of the easement. And, um, I listened to Mr. Mandel's concerns. I have some concern about Bruce Peters' number seven with the conservation areas and Bruce, if you, whatever else has to say about that.
Is that all? Okay.
I have nothing further, and I agree with, uh, Mr. Mandel, Mr. Swainy. Can't really move forward without this perk test, uh, as Bruce Peters said. That's all I have, Mr. Mandel.
Why do you suggest making the perk test?
Anytime Mr. Peters, like I said, we contacted Mr. Peters to try and do the perk test between the last, the last time we're here and now, anytime he's available, then we can get it done, we can get it done.
Seems like from what everybody else has said, that that's what we're gonna have to do, so. Ms. Jones, do you have anything?
Do you know the original language of the conservation easement? Can they?
For the, uh, re-
Permitted clearing and-
Correct, yeah. Can you, can you just read that into the-
Sure. Uh, it's note number twenty-five on file subdivision plaque, says, "Conservation, conservation easement shall not be disturbed except for removal of dead or dying vegetative, vegetation or extraneous debris. Construction of pools, sheds or other structures within the conservation easement shall not be permitted."
Thank you. I think that there's definitely a disconnect there between Peters and that, but I think that's something you have to take up with Peters and address there. I don't think the four-
It's also Rockland County Planning's recommendation.
But if it's, if that's what the, was approved provisionally-
That's the file that-
Then I don't know how, yeah, that's a, that's a cut out.
Yeah.
From two thousand four.
Doesn't add.
Yeah, if there are trees laying there, they need to be taken out.
Yeah.
You see that a lot?
I'm gonna ask a question of the attorney. I understand that's in two thousand four's language, but they're asking to move the line and change the size of the easement. Does that affect the prior ruling?
I happen to agree with Mr. Mandel. I think that times are different. The final, um, was never submitted and years and years after that, I think that, uh, Rockland County, uh, you do need a super majority to override. If you don't have it, you don't have it, regardless of what was sent in two thousand four.
Okay.
Okay, uh, board, do you have any other comments? Now, I'm gonna open it up to the public. Let me just say something to begin with. Um, we want everyone to be heard. Um, we're gonna, we got a lot of people here. I will go, if everybody's interested in this project or any other project, um, everybody will be allowed three minutes, okay? All questions and comments will be addressed to the board, not to the applicant. Um, if we, if the board feels it has remained, we will talk to the applicant on it. There will be no dialogue between, uh, the public and the applicant. Everything will be done through the board, okay? Anybody interested in this project, please come up, let us know your name, address and what you're concerned about. Yes, ma'am?
What's your name? I'm William Ringer. I have a two thirty-one Greenwich Road.
Go ahead, listen.
R-N-C-H-I-E-R-A.
And I'm sorry, what was your address?
Two thirty-one Greenwich. And I would just like to go on the record to point out that most, or all of the houses in that stretch of Greenwich Road live on groundwater. And if any of these modifications to the easement are gonna have any kind of an impact on the groundwater that supplies our groundwater, I believe, hopefully you take that into consideration and give the strictest scrutiny that you can, because I'm very concerned about possible future effects of this.
Thank you very much.
Hi, what's your name?
Eric Bosley.
Eric Bosley?
Yes.
And your address, sorry?
Two twenty South, three question.
Two twenty, south.
Yeah. I just want clarification. Are you guys approving moving the conservation easement? Cause I'm also a builder and-
We're not gonna move the easement, I didn't pick the move. The easement is there and stays there.
Yep. Thanks.
Anyone else? Everybody's here for something else. Okay, uh, motion, close, all, I mean, motion, all, okay, just, okay, okay, just a second. Second. Mandel, all favor? Aye. Okay.
Just wanna make a few points, which is relevant to this. And just to have a clear picture. I have, I bought the last July of a filed subdivision. So, from my experience, twenty-five years, a subdivision, the notes on the subdivision stay, are in stone, like the Bible, so they're, they're there forever. That's number one. Number two, and I remember we made, I think this board is aware, I have a house which is sixty-five percent complete and I wanna complete the house. So I'm not really, we tried to do the, about three weeks ago, I called myself, Bruce Peters, I said, this, we went to planning where they wanna do a perk test, even though we have a building permit and an approve, an approval to do the grassway, which we hadn't approved, obviously, you know, we're building. But I said, we went, we wanna move the line and we wanna change it. They would like to do a, a perk test. I said, would you come out? So he said to me, you know, it's the winter time, and I said, Bruce, you know, knowing from my experience, when we do a perk test, we go down six to eight feet at the ground, the frost is maybe ten inches, eight inches at that point. But he said, you know, it's the town's policy, we'll do it in the winter. And I said to Bruce, listen, I have no objection. We wanted to, we agreed to the board and we will do it. But we'll do it at the time whenever you want, when we're gonna put in the structure, like the engineer said, uh, John Atzl. The engineer designed this underground structure with the same volume of water which was designed to do the grassway, which they did a drainage report on this, a pretty hefty report. So that's what he designed should work for the, for the structure. If we're gonna do a perk test and for some reason that area is gonna be different soil, and again, like the engineer said, we can always widen that out because we have enough room. Well, we went to meeting last time and you went through all this and all these things didn't seem a problem. It was the last, just to remind you, that's when I hoped Bob Dell would be here, because his idea was, hey, you know, because I said that time, I said, we're not here for, for an application for anything else but for that, to move that, you know, to take out those four trees and move the line. And his call to us, okay, understand, you know, let's see what you're gonna trade us for. We came back with a professional environmental scientist, science from Peter Torgerson, which is, I think it pretty much yells out that, hey, you're getting the deal of a, of a century here. You're getting, we're gonna keep nineteen trees and we're gonna take out four. So I think, nobody can argue, this is a affair, like he said, another affair. This is a super horse trade for, for the town and for the environment and for the habitat. So what we're asking you tonight is, we're looking to, for an approval, because I wanna finish the house. And we can do, we agreed, we can do the perk subject, subject to the perk, pass you the perk test and, uh, what's his name, Bruce Peters, and make to, you know, the size of the, of the underground, uh, what, the- The COTEC system, that's how it's called. It's been known many times before, and again, this is something that's been asked by this board, it was hedged, nothing to do with application, but we still agree to do it. Thank you.
Mr. Mandel, I understand you're concerned, but let me just push something by and, and just see how you feel. If we were to go ahead and give them a passive approval pertaining to the perk test, that they have to satisfy the perk test in respect to Mr. Peters, if they don't, and they have to come back in with the changing of their underground system, then they should have to come back and we can review that. Well, my opinion on the spring is, what, a couple of weeks away? Uh, the weather is warming up. I don't see why they can't continue on what they're doing until, uh, we can get the perk test done and once it's approved, then they go finish it up. But, uh, I don't wanna start a setting a precedent where we, uh, we say, well, we'll base it on the perk test when it's done. I think we gotta keep, uh, cause there's other places that'll be coming in and say, well, we can't do perk test in the spring either. So we're gonna let them also go, cause they'll study- Well, we're not letting them go. We're allowing them to proceed with the project and they're not gonna get a final, they're not gonna get anything else until the perk test is passed and we look, and we get all the results from it. Uh, and if there is any modification on the underground system, they have to come back to us to review it. I mean, that's just, uh, a, a, something I put up. If the board doesn't like it, then that's fine. Uh, it's, it's up to the board. And what do you feel on it?
So you're saying you're not getting final tonight?
We could give them a passive final with the option that they pass the perk test. If they don't pass the perk test, they have to come back with a modification on their underground system. If they pass the perk test, that's gonna satisfy Bruce Peters. So I'm, I'm just trying to avoid them coming back another time if, if, if we give them a passive approval pertaining to, they have to satisfy something in order to get it.
I understand your comments, but I disagree. I go back to my initial comment, while I'm very happy that there's a number of trees being saved, you know, like in our comments from last time. I don't like the characterization that this is like a one-sided deal, getting all the benefit here. Remember my comments from last meeting? You're asking to move back the easement line to gain some property. I feel some of it is self-imposed, you say that it's too close to the house you built, but you built a much larger house and it originally was, thought it was gonna be there. And we're not, the fact that we're not cutting down many trees doesn't mean you're not cutting down any trees. They're giving us anything back by not cutting down trees we won't put down in the first place. So I think we should stick with our consultants and I think we should follow Bruce Peters and follow Rockland County. Once everything is met, then we can discuss whether or not we'll do final.
Okay, and what's, you said you wanna complete the house, what's stopping you from completing the house now?
I wanna know where I'm going. I'm ready to do the grading.
Which, I wanna know which one I'm doing.
I can be-
The size of the house hasn't changed.
It isn't.
So the house should still be completed.
I agree.
Also, we have this approval tonight.
We have a building on this.
That they, I want, they make a reference, you can see what the board's attitude is. And I do brought that up, um, I, I, I know, I think Mr. Young and, and Mr. Jones have kinda had the same feeling. I think the board may suggest is that you have to continue motion and that, uh, you do the perk test and you come back, and I think that's gonna be the quickest way of doing it. And I think it's, it's, I don't know what the schedule is, uh, Cheryl, uh, when would be the quickest time that you could get on?
It's not up to you guys also.
Next meeting?
It's three weeks.
Then that's the next meeting, after that, April tenth?
Yeah.
No, that's not the next meeting, but the week, month, one after that, April tenth, probably.
Okay. So you, theoretically, you could continue working on your project other than doing the grading, and once your perk test is done, and you get the approval on the perk test, you come back then. And at that time, we'll, if everything is fine, we'll give you your final. I think that's gonna be the easiest way for you.
Not my decision.
I mean, I understand, I mean, I understand.
I appreciate you trying, trying to work on it, yeah.
You have a problem. I mean, right, I can finish everything like gold as the guy-
I understand.
And I just wanna make one thing clear, because he's taking, he's, he's really taking this wrong. I built the house according to, by rights. I didn't need no guarantees. I built it bigger than it was originally planned, true.
Sir, we don't care about that. I understand what you're saying, okay? What we're saying is that there is an issue in the perk test which is requiring, right now, we don't have it. Same thing, if somebody comes in with an application, they don't have drainage, we won't look at the project. So basically, it's the same thing, okay? You don't have drainage in respect, you don't have perk test. So if you ask for continuation, I think you can get on probably three or four weeks. You continue working on your project, do everything else other than grading, and at that time, you come back in with a copy of the perk test and everything is fine, uh, they won't look at it.
The one, yeah, I would like this board to give me the one we can do the perk test. You're gonna have to talk to them.
You're gonna have to talk to them. We have nothing to do with that. You have to talk to, um, Mr. Peters, work it out with him as to what it can be done. Once it's done, you get back on the, uh, the agenda. That's the only thing we can do for it. The other option, you know, like, and then-
Spring, spring is next week, sorry.
Yeah, so-
You can't hide it.
Calendar, calendar wise.
Thank you very much, very very much. You're welcome.
No, actually, it seems to be the grid out, agrees out in the fall. When is the next? You just want the proof and go ask the one who's in the club. We want this to be-
April tenth. April tenth, have, have something in to be, um, by March twenty-eighth, when we have the agenda.
You just need the proof this direction.
Yeah, I just want to put you on the agenda, so.
Let you, let you know why the twenty-eighth is gonna be on the agenda?
No, it's one of the ways, like, the twenty-seventh, twenty-sixth. Keep the signs up.
Uh, Cheryl, you were asking for continuation. Okay, thank you very much.
John.
Thank you.
Keep the signs up and if we go on to next meeting, just change it by hand. April tenth, that's what we'll, we'll shoot for, April tenth.
April, April tenth.
Is that what you want, or do you notice?
Thank you very much.
Writing it down by March twenty-seventh.
Okay, your next item, we have the St. Thomas Aquinas College dormitory site plan, TB nineteen dash twelve. Please come up and sign in for the record. Again, if anybody's here for Dynamic Productions USA, you may not be here.
What's your gentleman's name here?
Joe. D, D O N, I cannot. Great, thank you.
He said, you can write that down? Okay. Okay, please, just fill in your application.
Sure. Uh, this is for St. Thomas Aquinas College. What we're proposing to do is, uh, construct a new dormitory connected to building three hundred, um, which is located on the campus of St. Thomas Aquinas. It'll be thirty-six rooms with two beds per room for a total of seventy-two beds. There's not gonna be an increase in students, um, with this proposal. There's not gonna be an increase in students, um, with this proposal, basically what the college is trying to do, they have, they have a lot of quads, which are four-person rooms, and students don't like quads anymore, they'd rather have two beds per room. So it kinda spread out the existing, um, the existing dormitory population throughout the campus, and, and they're requesting site plan approval for this project. We've supplied a drainage report, landscaping and lighting plans, um, and, um, just like to get the board's feedback in, so we can get preliminary approval. We do need variances for number of beds, we've been before this board, and zoning board, number of times for the number of beds, and some other area variances, that's noted in Ms. Slavin's comments.
Okay, um, project review has no additional comments. February 25th, Jane Slavin, Office of Building and Zoning in 300, has four, and then, I have a notation which says check for three zoning, uh, I have a notation says not in. Cheryl, what is that?
Oh, that was my, that's, that's me, forget it.
Okay. I was wondering what type that was. So they have, for four notations, plus, uh, cameras, well...
Right, I had discussed that with Ms. Slavin actually a couple of weeks ago, and we'll, we'll modify the plans, critical requirements. Because these plans, we've done, all, we've done a number of projects on St. Thomas when John Giudello is here, and we've done them all in the same fashion, she's requesting some more information, and she's the new sheriff in town, so we're gonna accommodate what she's requiring, we have no issue with it.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Department of Environmental Management Engineering, Bruce Peters, has fourteen.
Fourteen. Right, and I've spoken to Mr. Peters about that, apparently there is a pump station issue. We're gonna meet with him, our engineers, and Mr. Denis from St. Thomas, and we view that, and we will be doing the perk test prior to, less than final approval.
Oh, there's one, I need to pick up, and I, I don't understand, it's, number six, the applicant's engineers shall explain the purpose of the dirt burn shown in the proposed dry pond on drawing four of six, in a stormwater, stormwater management design.
Right, actually, uh, the dirt burn that's, that's on the plans is adjacent, it's an existing dirt burn, it's adjacent to the existing fire lane, both of which are gonna be removed. We're gonna relocate the fire lane and the dirt, the dirt burn and the fire lane, the existing fire lane, that be, is gonna be relocated.
I have a local engineering, those are drainage, they have eight comments, and the applicant has provided sufficient calculations to demonstrate that this closed stormwater management system will mitigate potential significant adverse impacts with respect to drainage. We therefore recommend that the St. Thomas Aquinas dormitory site plan be approved for drainage at this time. And Rockland Planning has thirteen items. Mr. Mendel, weren't you concerned about one of the items, Thomas?
Yes, let me see, that's item number, hold on.
Oh, I will push up, would you, would you couple your comments, maybe?
Yeah, it's on my table.
Okay, thank you. Um, Rockland County Highway has two comments. Rockland County Health has one. Rockland County Shore has two. Rockland County Drainage, um...
We will be requiring, uh, required to obtain a permit from the Rockland County Drainage Agency due to the close proximity of the Sparkville Creek and the Hundred Year Grove, and on the other side of building 200.
And it says that the Rockland County Drainage Authority does not project the planning or sole responsibility to the agency. Okay, um, and I have from Michael Beckman, uh, Rockland County Fire, he has five items. Uh, and I have, um, decision from County Highway and CBA. Cheryl, anything else?
Nothing.
Mr. Mendel?
I'm pleased to answer the question, we're trying to figure out how you would, uh, use the rules, but don't use... Thank you on that one. Couple of questions, what's the actual area of disturbance gonna be there?
Uh, the area of disturbance for this? It's actually... Probably Nick would got thirty thousand square feet.
Uh, oh, I did, the, uh, third question stands number of dormitory rooms, uh, which got CBA approval from the last two times. However, uh, Rockland County Planning on their number of... Okay, I made number seven, it says here, uh, if the downtown Orange Town wants to have a higher ratio of dormitory beds to the lot area, and a better way of proceeding would be to mend the zone, or it has to reflect the decided land, bed ratios, colleges, universities. Because as I said, this is the third time, so you keep coming back for a change, and change, and change, but in fact, it should be the, the, the county board that changes the zoning, which would make it a lot easier in the future for any sort of, uh, change that you may wanna make, and for any of the other universities, uh, in the Orange Town. This is my, my field one, I should know for the, uh, the board, or, uh, that. Uh, you mentioned the pumping station, and current, uh, to Mr. Peters, it's, uh, his project currently at the capacity, and he rated thirty-six bedrooms, uh, which is going to increase the capacity. Is there a plan, uh, so far to remedy it, without putting taxpayer money, or what is the plan?
Uh, no, actually, I, like I said, I spoke to Mr. Peters, we're gonna meet and come up with, see what the actual problems are, and come up with a plan to help, to help mitigate any problems, and we'll, we'll satisfy Mr. Peters.
You answered the dirt burn, it says it's gonna be removed, then?
Yes, yes, that's an existing, an existing dirt burn.
Yeah, no, I saw it there, I was wondering about that.
Okay, now, for example, if you lost, take that the dry pond overflow with the river ramp, it runs towards the, uh, other dorm located to the southmost of the pond. Is that, how that, is that gonna be mitigated, so it doesn't affect the, uh...
Yeah, we're gonna take a look at that, and then maybe we'll revise the plans to redirect any, any overflow away from buildings.
In a long way, I was saying before about the zoning of the town, but you're also, uh, coming all over the, uh, the, uh...
The height variance.
Yeah, yeah, so that's something that should be done. And the last thing I just wanna mention, uh, you say you're gonna put in eight new trees. Uh, we take down twenty-five, we're gonna put in eight, let's hide on those two trees. Look like a tree we broke up yesterday.
Probably, they'll, probably end up being, uh, six foot, probably, if you're planning, unless the board, the board request different.
And, uh, you know, my take, I think we should be planting more than eight trees, but we're taking down twenty-five, where we could see the, uh, whole area there, as far as the, uh... As far as the, they've stayed the whole area, and you keep cutting down trees, there are wood trees being cut down, and that's kind of, I think, too, we're putting this, Dellywood, the trees, uh, when wood trees cut down, and naturally, uh, they, they, you added some to the plants. I'd like to see something like that.
So we do get more trees into the, uh, into the, uh, area there, so it's screened off a little bit more from the, the road on the other side, is going up to, uh, to the, uh, uh, you know, is that, put these on the, inside, we're right. So, alright?
It's all up to this side, three times.
Yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll take that under advisement, and, uh, if, at the board request, we'll add some, if at the board request, uh...
Just remember, if the, uh, planning board has final approval on landscaping, okay?
Understood.
With no act of board, we'll be talking to you, thank you.
Oh, Mr. Mendel, we want, in our comments, that we would like to have the approval, and to have the, the, the more trees?
Yes, yes.
For the volume shortage.
Um, quick question, again, I have a similar thing about the, um, the number of beds, and increasing building rooms, and I have more students, more beds and more parking, so I have a kind of a simplistic question though, so excuse me, um, are beds a unit of, I'm not sure are they really beds, because you said you're gonna add new rooms, and put two beds in a room, and have the quads, are you taking beds out of the quads to make up for that?
Yes, yes, yes.
So the number of beds stay the same then? If you're adding beds or taking beds alike, is the number of beds staying the same?
Theoretically, probably correct.
So why is there an ask for increase in number of beds?
They're taking three rooms.
No, but, yeah, but, yeah, but why, why is there increase? If you're adding beds or taking away beds, why is there a speech total?
To increase that.
No, I mean, I, I...
That's a question, uh...
I agree, I don't...
I mean, if the board sees fit to grant preliminary, I would have that discussion with Ms. Slavin, and maybe we wouldn't require that bed variance.
Yeah, I think this way, we could, and then put, people, four people back into those quads, and have this, and then have a population problem, with more parking, more, um, students, more sanitary ways, whatever the things may be.
Right.
So I would, I'd request that the number of beds stay the same, that's what we're trying to do. Yeah, that's all I have.
That may, that may eliminate one variance.
No, I would just be repeating with Mr. Sweeney, Mr. Mendel, as far as some kids not wanting quads anymore, I mean...
That's the industry, it's, it's, you know...
I put three through college already, and, and, you know what I would say to them, if they said that to me? That's all I have, Mr. Jim.
Just beg it, come on.
No, I don't, I don't have any, she didn't like smoking up there, so, I see. And Miss Yost?
Well, yeah, if you're gonna put in trees back, maybe put hardwoods or something to channel, rather than, if you have that, if you didn't call for it, or anything like that.
The notes?
The notes are fine. Not something that's gonna have disease and, you know...
Something that the dirt don't want too much.
Right, plastic.
They jive it up and like it.
Over those.
Nothing gross.
Okay, thank you very much. Uh, I'm gonna open it up to the public, we wanna allow everybody who has any interest in this project to come up and speak. Uh, again, I would like you to remind you that you are limited to three minutes. Uh, we have a lot of people here, again, I don't know who's involved with this project, so, whoever is interested, please come up, state your name to the record, and then we'll move on. No one's interested.
I'll make a motion, close the public portion here.
Second?
I have a second, Mr. Mendel, all favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
None, okay, public to close. So, preliminary conditions?
Most, yeah, so...
So we have to make, uh, motions for the agent?
Motion.
Mr. Young, second, Mr. Sweeney, all favor?
Aye.
Make it, five, no motion, next, second. Mendel, all favor?
Aye.
Preliminary, what conditions? Okay, conditions are. Uh, Jane Slavin, February 25th, four items. Uh, Department Environmental Management, Bruce Peters, fourteen. Uh, local engineering, February 19th, has eight. Um, Department, Rockland County Department of Planning, February 26th, has thirteen. Department of Highway, two. Uh, February 26th, Department of Health, one. Rockland County, uh, Sewer, February 8th, two. Rockland County Drainage, February 9th, it's just, uh...
One big one.
Warms Town Fire Department, Michael Beckman, dated, uh, February 25th, five items, and that's it. Okay, we'll have a second?
I was just standing there about what's...
Oh, yeah, so I'll put it in there, that, uh, the applicant will, uh, at, at order, favor more trees, in respect to the ones that they're taking down. I understand, okay, second?
Can we, can we put in there something about number of beds in the calculation?
Did you have, uh, translate it now?
She's, I'm saying, if the nine is using the beds, that's the...
Well, actually, I think that would be an open item until I have a discussion on it in this case.
Well, that's a back one.
So that would be the final, yeah, that would be the final, right?
Good, Mr. Sweeney, please wait a minute?
Sure.
Okay, all favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you, thank you.
Okay, next item is Lowe's, uh, Warmsburg Site Plan, TB 19-14. Okay, good one, project.
So, we are talking about Lowe's of Warmsburg, right around 303, South Street. Um, they've been open, I think the original site plan approved in 2004. Uh, they've been operating, and then recently, there was a inspection done by the building department, and Michael Axson went out and noticed that there was some outdoor storage that was not on the approved site plan, it was on file with the town. The approved site plan was on file with the town, it's for the Garden Center expansion, chapter in 2008, 2009, which I think was a stripped-down version of the original plan, but that original plan was not in the town file, nor do the Lowe's have a copy of it, so, in effect, we have a plan that's showing some outdoor stor, or a site that's showing outdoor storage, where the site plan that approved on file didn't have it. So, since that time, Lowe's, I have with me George Ferdinand, store manager, they've been working with the town, the building inspector, the fire inspector, to try to find this original approved plan, to see if, in fact, outdoor storage was approved at that time, and whatnot, but, since we couldn't find it, we're here to kind of correct that paperwork essentially, to put on file a plan, you know, for you, which shows these areas designated for outdoor storage for the different, uh, storage needs that they, that they have, have been using essentially since they've been open.
So, let me ask you one question, so these, the Jane Slavin letter, she says that the planning board approval is required to rectify the violations, these are the violations that she's talking about?
Correct.
I'm prepared to correct those.
Correct, there was a violation notice, um, issued by Michael Axson, which talks about the outdoor storage, and then the fire lane, which was not striped, but that is shown on the plan, and is striped if you go out to the site in the front, it's all striped, fire lane, no parking, and then it loops around the back, and that's been done in coordination and meetings with the fire inspector.
And the trailers.
And the trailers in the back, that have to be moved out of the way.
And we go, we do the comment, you have any question on the comments, or we don't approve, just, you know?
Sure.
Uh, project review has no additional comments? March 10th, Jane Slavin, Department of, uh, zoning planning, she has three. What is, a used variance must be pinned, I don't understand that.
So, I believe what she's referring to is the fact that, in this zone, in the column, accessory storage of goods to the original property, technically part of a used variance. That kind of ties back to what, the orig, the original violations, if this board, you know, sees fit, according to Ms. Slavin, even though it wasn't in the original referral to this board, we, you know, we, it says, she, she's saying we need to get a used variance for this outdoor store, so we'd have to go to the, to the zoning board for that.
Department of Environmental Management, down in Warms Town, uh, March 7th, who has, has three items. Rockland County Planning, uh, March 12th, has eleven items. Any comment?
Yeah, I just wanted to touch on, um, a couple of those, because they do say, uh, we must do a couple of things in them. Um, so, comment number two, um, says that several of the outdoor stra, storage storage will be visible from the adjacent lot, and that screening must be installed to comply with the use regulation, but, all of the surrounding uses, adjacent lot... with the use regulation, but all of the surrounding uses, adjacent lots are all commercial. There is landscaping around the perimeter of the site right now, so we don't feel that additional landscaping screening is necessary. There are some fences around, but if this board, you know, notices areas where there's deficiencies, you know, it's something we need to discuss with the client.
What's your other?
The other one would be, uh, number four, where they say that, um, the number of storage areas displayed seems excessive, and that air, the number of them must be reduced. That's really up to the store operation, they're somewhat seasonal in nature, some of the different areas, and there might be overlap during busy seasons, which we're approaching now, as a lot of their molten, things like that. So, I would request an override.
Okay, we'll propose a. Um, Rockland County Highway, number fourteen, has three items. Let's see, it's number two, it says, design engineer, data cycling, correct, so.
Yeah, I think we set it up long enough, and we'll correct that.
Rockland County Planning, uh, March twelve. No, we're, I, I was gonna say. Um, Rockland County Sewer, February twenty seven, two items. Okay, uh, Fire Prevention County, Rockland County, Michael Burton, uh, March fourth, uh, for Lowe's site plan, five items need to be addressed. Fire prevention, there's no problem using the form of fire zone slash lane on the south side of storage. Does not worry with changing the front of the store from fire zone slash lane to loading zone, as we believe that although the overlook and is not released by the store, and is down, no further comments of this topic.
So, the, I think what he's referring to is in the front, I'm sure most of you have been to this Lowe's before, but that actual main front entrance drive, on the side along the building, there is striking that says, fire zone, no parking. But, just beyond that, is the loading zone for people that are picking up a grill, or contractors picking up lumber, that's been, that's how it is shown in the approved plan? We're not proposing to change that in any way, the full width exceeds the minimum requirement for a fire lane in that area, and we're, we're keeping that as is.
You're gonna have to satisfy them with this.
We gotta do that.
Because that strip is only four feet wide in front of your store.
Right, the loading.
No, the fire.
Well, the full, full lane is technically a fire access.
Correct, but lane, which you identified in front, is on the, the four foot, there's a sidewalk with.
Well, so, that is typically what gets put on next to a curb to prevent people from parking in that spot. It's basically like the fire access, we'll work with Mr. Beckman on this, and he had to sign off, but it is so that we have that full area open, which would be.
You just gotta, it may just satisfy whatever it's going to be.
We will do that.
Okay, um, I also have, uh, Warshtown Zoning Board, uh, Rockland County Highway Department, and, that's it, Cheryl, any more?
That's it.
Okay, uh. Oh, okay. Mr. Mendel.
I gotta ask you something, okay?
Yeah.
Got a couple of questions. Uh, first of all, uh, there's a couple of things I missed, and I have to update the plan with the city map and whatever else, but I think what, uh, Mr. Peters was looking for, the E M V was, uh, showing sewer lines, and there are the easements in there, uh, so that we can make a proper decision as to approval, is anything being covered over?
Yep.
You know, because I can see this, I think that's a sewer line, or drainage.
Yeah, we did take a quick look at that map, and there are some corners, so we will have to shift and move that, before we provide that documentation.
Yeah, okay, so, so, otherwise, there's no way we're gonna approve that.
Absolutely.
Uh, secondly, I don't see on here, are the sheds, uh, still there?
The sheds in the corner, those have been.
Yeah, so, part of the proposed plan was to move the sheds, originally, the fire lane on the left side of the building there.
They're gonna get.
There's a fire lane, and it's too close to the building, so the fire marshal that walks in, use that area stores, so we can float that into that.
Yeah, no, definitely too close, but I'm talking about the, uh.
The sheds over here.
Yeah, the sheds, they're a little further down, I think, it's, yeah, right, right.
Yeah, they're gonna be moved to the side.
Okay, so people, people walk over there.
Yeah, that would, yeah, we actually don't sell a lot of sheds, but it costs a lot of scene a lot of times.
Yeah.
So ultimately, they'll be moved over there.
Oh, okay. And, uh, see. Is this looking, because you're, that's one of the things, what was it, do you know the original number of parking spaces you were, uh, you were required to have in the original plan?
So, that's part of it, too. Finding that original plan from two thousand and four has been an issue, but in the two thousand and, uh, eight or nine plan, if I have that calculation. Uh, the original, I think it was six hundred and seventy-five.
Right. That was, that looks too quiet.
And that included, like, some land bank spaces.
Yeah, which are over on the south side of the building?
Yeah, and also on the, yes, the east side.
Okay.
Around the perimeter there.
Right. Um, what was the required amount, was that the six seventy-five required, so looking, with the sheds that you're putting in, there's about thirty-three spots.
Right, so I, I think that is, that was required now, one for two hundred square feet, it was six seventy-five.
Yeah.
So, we would still, they have not had any issues with parking on the site, but, yes, yeah, we will be losing a few more for some of these subdivision.
Well, yeah, well, it shows here, it's, it's thirty-three, on the.
I think the, part of the intent of the building inspector issuing the violation was to get an accurate site plan that matches what's out there, so as we add the vicinity map, I think parking now is probably more into.
Okay, I appreciate that.
Sure.
Thank you, Mr. Mendel.
Thanks for talking a bit about the, um, some of the comments here, I just wanted to clarify, I think you answered most of my questions, I was only trying to clarify a couple, so, um, you brought up, um, Department of Planning, so, what's it, thirteen, eleven comments, and number two, um, I think I, I kind of re-reviewed that, that comment screening must be installed, because if it's not there, if it's there already, then we've already met anything that would have been required, so, I don't see that being an issue. Well, I've already brought them before, but I had a question of that as well, uh, where you read about, it says, the storage areas seem excessive, excuse me, and they must be reduced, I think, is because what they said earlier was, the town must be cautious permitting these display areas, or other retail businesses may request similar exemptions, so as to have higher visibility to vote to sale items. So I guess, my question, or moving answer is, is this an exemption to put these things out there? Is it an exemption, or is this part of the original plan?
With the cost of string and beckons, I would think you'd see, you'd see a couple of them over there.
But again, it's, the question's about Mr. Fossey. So I'm asking, is it an exemption, as they say in Rockland County, to grant this permission, or is it part of the original site plan?
As far as I know, those are Lowe's that are visiting.
Yeah. And, and, they're, they're, they're putting us on notice here, I want to make sure that we know the antipost.
I, I agree. It was in the white paper. Sir, just to add, we're seasonal, so, from like, October till right about now, there's nothing out there.
All right, I get it, I get it. It's like, they're writing it here, and I have to prove it, I want to make sure, when they say it's exemption, is it truly an exemption, or is it just practice, or is it part of the site plan? And I, I can wait on that, I can go on.
It could, uh, to Ms. Slavin's letter, she's saying that because it's outdoor storage, the used variance is required, so, I, we still have to get that, which is maybe the exemption.
So is the used variance the exemption? What do you think?
As seasonal outdoor.
Yeah, I think they're just using exemption in general. But if there's a variance, I think that's what they mean.
We would have to grant the used variance for the outdoor.
That would go to the Z V A.
Oh, Z V A, okay.
Yeah.
All right, okay. And then, again, I think the point that you brought up, is gonna be dealt with, you know, um, the fire inspector's comment about the, um, the loading zone versus fire lane, and make sure that he's agreeable that there still is a fire lane in front of the building, that's provided now. And like, I'm worried, if there's a zone, a loading zone, and then a fire lane, there's now cars between the fire vehicles and the building, and that's worrying me, that where the zone, the loading zone is, it's encroaching on, blocking the fire lane. Um, so I'm, I'm going to make sure he clears that.
Hopefully, it's fine with issue.
Yeah, okay, that's all I have.
Thank you, Monsieur Young.
I have no.
What? Yes?
Uh, one other thing.
Yes?
Yeah. You may just wanna, because it's Rockland County planning that we deal with, okay? Uh, you may wanna decide that you don't need those things where it says loading zone, those couple of spots, and make your lo- main loading zone on the, uh, the south side, like, you have, uh, all the lumber and everything, and off of all, they're loading, 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 if people don't comply, hopefully, they will all comply, but are tanky to. Right, it makes it easier, this way, you remove that from the plans, that solves the problem, I think, uh, rather than try to fight the county on it, because then you'll only get their approval.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Um, I'm gonna open this up to the public, anybody who has any comments, please come forward. Anyone? Motion for a next motion closed.
Second.
Mr. Mendel, all favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? Okay, so, oh. Okay, so, Mr. Bond, that's lead agent, second.
Second.
Mr. Young, all favor?
Aye.
Motion to connect that? Mr. Bond, second?
Second.
Mrs. Sweeney, all favor?
Aye.
Preliminary conditions. Okay, preliminary conditions.
We are too bad, we want to join the panel.
We'll get that one, we'll get it all to the floor. Yeah, project review has none? Uh, Slavin has three. Uh, Department of Environmental Management has three. Okay, with respect to Department of Planning, uh, do I have a motion to override number one? Number one is screening must be ins-.
Number three, or two.
Or number two, I'm sorry, please excuse me. Uh, says no free comp center, table general use requirements of the district requires that all open stores shall be screened from adjacent lots from the street line. Several of the outdoor trailers and storage sharing are visible from the adjacent lot. Screening must be installed to comply with this use regulation. Do we have a motion to override that? I have a motion. Mr. Bond makes a motion to override, I have a second.
Second.
Mr. Young has the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Okay, there's a rationale.
Do we?
We need a rationale, for the record, of why we're.
Uh, um, we just don't feel.
Is this thing, is this, they have existing screening?
There is existing screening.
There's sufficient.
Okay, sufficient, okay, thank you. Okay, next is number four. Uh, and I'm gonna read the whole thing, it just says, the number of display and storage areas must be reduced, must be reduced. Do I have a motion to override that, number four?
I'll make a motion.
Mr. Bond makes a motion to have a second.
I'll second.
Mr. Mendel makes a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None.
Rational.
The rationale is that, uh, it's a seasonal thing, so during the summer, they have no product, and.
They have to go for the used variance.
They have to go for the used variance, and we should wipe, we should wipe this right out, but we have our recommendation.
Okay.
All right, Cheryl?
Thank you.
But they're removing the sheds.
The sheds, they removed the sheds, that was part of it.
Yeah, they're not moved, they're moved, it's actually part of the rationale, so those sheds are being moved.
Being moved, they're not being removed.
Oh, they're being, yeah, well, they're being removed to a, an area that's not visible to public and is screened.
Right. Okay, uh, Rockland County Highway has three. And, Rockland County Sewer has two. Uh, County of Warshtown Fire Prevention, Michael Beckman, has, uh, just one letter. Okay, anything else? Okay, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Joseph, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
None.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, next is Quinlan, the subdivision. Will you step up, and we'll sign it? Pardon me, would you? Yeah, sure.
Hi, what's your name?
Kathy Wayne.
Kathy Wayne.
Did you, and you, did you give my address?
Sir, is it primarily a project? Primarily, Kathy is the executor for, uh, father's estate on Quinlan, on property on Central, East Central Avenue, or actually, West Central Avenue, and, um, she's trying to straighten out the estate. Mr. Quinlan lived in a very small house, and behind this house, if you take a look at the drawing, there's a very large business property which he did own. So we have two lots there, one quite small, the other one quite large, and this is just an adjustment of the property line, where they added some relatively too-to-small lots, to make them both compatible for the estate, so that the estate can solid, sell the property.
Do you have any comments? Project review, any additional comments? March ten, Jane Slavin, has three. Department of Environmental Management, two theaters, has two. Booker Engineering, opposed, and Axson, a lot of chance, and not resolved, and so the, and Roseanne, Pat, we've got a call, but a party of, 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 some, of, of, approved, so, any further questions? And, Rockland County Planning, has three.
I do have a question on one of them, which, um, they did make a note here that, under the Rockland County, County Stream Control Act, must be reviewed, this primarily, not a subdivision, this is a property line adjustment, so I don't believe that's applicable, plus the fact we're not even in that area that the Rockland County has jurisdiction on, so I believe two should be, um, I should, one should be overridden, because it's not, it's not a subdivision.
I don't know if we should override it, or if you should just go back to them, saying it's not appropriate, it's not, it doesn't apply.
Okay.
And then they'll just, they'll just take it off themselves, versus us trying to override.
Okay. The only trouble, I would like to ask for a file tonight, if it's possible, subject to subdivision.
Yeah. Um, Rockland County Highway, has two. Rockland County Sewer, has two. County of Warshtown Fire Prevention, Michael Burton, uh, following, I have the driveway at the beginning, a renewed old block, almost a hundred fifty, a hundred eighty feet long, that has to be stabilized to hold a seventy-five thousand pound emergency vehicle, that's okay.
I, just one other thing, I wanted to state, um, the building proposition for two eighty-eight variance, uh, this is not, they already have the rights to the back lawn, we are not making new law, so, then again, there's another item, which has to be looked at, of course, um.
Well, as you know, we don't override our consultants.
No, I'm not, I'm sorry.
I think you have to talk to her.
Sorry about that. I mean, we don't have a problem dealing, it's just that we have that right right now, there's even on record.
Well, let's, see where we go with what that is.
Okay.
Okay, um, I have a letter, a record, from a Daniel O'Donnell, um, Wednesday, March thirteenth, uh, here in the school, so, thank you, putting me on the gen, the apartment number application, by Daniel, the owner of the two, uh, affronted, affected property since the mid nineteen fifties. The entire one sixty-nine west central avenue property, formerly labeled as the, that's her, on the survey, uh, has its entire two hundred and forty-three feet back there, property line flooding, and proposed subdivision. My question is, has a training study been done for this proposed subdivision, property The property, too, developed, is extremely marshy, and there's a high water table area. It currently requires that I run a sound pump twenty-four seven, with minimum rainfall. There was significant flooding in that basin. There was an active driveway on each side of the Noles property, flooding the one sixty-nine West Central Avenue side yard, that is not reflected on the survey, so that's a photo, I don't know. Uh, because this open-ended driveway is straight, leading to an eighteen-foot right-of-way driveway between the Noles and Quinlan, residents of Quinlan family, will drive directly in and out to West Central Avenue rather than use Central Street for ingress, egress. Uh, I am therefore requesting that the base, the advent of subdivision, that this unofficial access road not be allowed for ingress, egress to the Quinlan property. As I am the owner of my childhood home at thirty-five Center Street, which is at the traffic light on West Washington Avenue, I would like to ensure that a traffic study is done. Our short section of Central Street has become a high-speed cut through to Central Avenue for non-stop traffic. It comes flying through from Montel Offutt Park, as the traffic light traveled downtown for work. Uh, I have been nearly roadside multiple times, as the traffic law, not driveway. Traffic study is imperative to assess the additional traffic danger that will be incurred by the existing residents' cars of the subdivision. It should also be noted, many cars park on Central Street in navigation on a street very tricky. For the record, the current Quinlan residence is a two-story structure, not a one-story as noted on the survey. By this note, I am also requesting no further subdivision of this parcel of land. Thank you for your consideration of these issues. The other letter is from uh, Jameson, um, Monday, March eleventh. To who would be concerned? This letter is in reference to section sixty-eight point one nine, block two, lots thirty-six, eighty-eight, in RG zoning district. The site address on this letter is incorrect, and so is the owner's name on the town survey map.
That is, that is correct, there was an error in the address, not on the map, but there was an error in the address.
No, what he's talking about is the Chris's property. Who owns that property?
No, but we don't.
But that's not the name, they don't own that anymore.
No, it was sold, that was sold.
But that's the address that's shown on this.
Yeah, that, that was the area, but the map, but the mark is proper on what we, what we hear from.
It's actually twelve Center Street and the eighth Center.
Okay, let me test this. Okay, the owner's name on the town survey map, James Mourinho, Mourinho?
Correct.
Mourinho, owns twenty Center Street, Pearl River, New York, not Chris's. Quinlan's address is twelve Center Street, Pearl River. Uh, I'd like to ask the town board to consider asking the advocates to resubdivision on this land, best regards.
Okay, again, we're not doing the subdivision, it's always doing, it's changing a property line, so that twelve Center Street has a larger backyard, and the larger parcel is cut out by the trail. It's just a map-like change. We're not doing subdivision, the access is the same access, it is a legal right-of-way going from Center Street back to the parcel. It has been that way for many, many years.
Since nineteen fifty-four.
I could be wrong, but I actually did a lot line change around here. I came before this one, and it was told that there's actually no such thing as a lot line change anymore, it was actually a subdivision. So in a better way, it was called a subdivision.
Yeah, if I can comment, Ms. Yost is correct. I mean, it's semantics, but you can call it a lot line change. Under our code, it's a subdivision or re-subdivision, so.
Now, what is the address of this existing garage? Is that the eight?
That's the problem. That house stands by itself. Without my moving this lot line back, my mother's house loses its garage, loses its backyard, and loses all of its property, or all of its parking. So if I move the lot line back behind the garage, then the little tiny house gets the use of the garage. It gets a backyard, and it gets its parking back. There's only ten feet between the back of my mother's house and her property line. And because they only, what was that, that don't look like their backyard, it wasn't. I mean, they owned it, but.
So this is a subdivision.
Uh-huh, if there's still two lots, we're making it.
Well, free line, it's totally a subdivision.
Okay, well, what about on lot two? What's the proposal for lot two?
It is not.
Nothing.
We propose two, nothing.
Okay, but I mean, but it's thirty-three hundred square feet.
That's great.
So, and it's R-ten zone, so. Can you go over the asset back there, or can you go two?
It's land.
Well, it's not land, it has the right-of-way. No, it's not land, it has the right-of-way, but the point involved is, you know, the slave didn't even say anything. You have to come back, come to the planning board, see if they ever want to subdivide that piece of property. Right now, it is one lot, and it's to remain one lot, and it will be sold, the estate will sell it as one lot.
Because it's advertised as a re-subdivision, not as a lot line change.
That's what I have been informed.
Mendel? Uh, just look, just look here at the plans. That existing rapid driveway, whose property is that on?
That property, that property in essence is on the, the noise property. However, that's been a right-of-way easement to the backyard for many years, forty, fifteen years.
Your four hours.
Probably, I think it's on five.
And with the same property, but it's rid of. So, there's an easement for that driveway. So, that driveway now currently being used to get access to the garage and everything.
That is correct.
So, what, on lot one? Was it, so is there gonna be an easement that's gonna run with lot one to access lot two? Cause I can see that showing on it.
Well.
It's not showing on lot one now.
It says the proposed extension.
You could look at the.
The proposed extension.
That's the driveway.
Um, Mr. Peter brought up that point about the uh, the lot, uh, which was never settled at the project review. We've gone, is it a buildable lot, if it is, that they should show the sewer and the drain, I know Mr. Brenner said that he felt that it wasn't, and the defendant's decision has stood for going on that.
Well, if you look closely, you saw what the building department said, that the applicant is reminded that they will be required to reappear before the planning board in the future, when a development plan is proposed for lot number two. Okay, and that's, this is just an estate trying to, when it is that lot is sold, if the person wants to develop it, however he has to develop it, he must come back to your board and meet all requirements of this fee.
Yeah, no, this, that was from Mr. Peter's letter, that I'm.
I, I know, but.
It's number one, yeah.
But this, uh, the slave is number three. All right, go ahead and carry that.
But lot one and the existing house, you're not merging that.
So, no. I'm taking lot one, the house and the garage, it's gonna be one lot, this out.
So it's gonna be, you're gonna remove that lot?
That's, yeah, that's the best.
So the thirteen, seven, nine, one square feet.
Includes.
It includes the six facets, right?
That is correct.
So this is gonna be lot one.
And that's gonna be lot number two.
No, that, a thirteen, seven does not include the existing.
Six doesn't work.
No, no, this is seventy by one, two hundred, that's fourteen thousand square feet.
If, if you looked at. Quinlan residents, there's a region of five thousand three hundred square feet, and they're, they're enlarging it now.
No, it's, it's correct in the, the bulk table, however.
It should be nineteen thousand.
All right, that's right.
Right, instead of thirteen. Those guys have to be doing oriented together on those.
It's something.
It is, it's a change table, if you look at a bulk table.
It's nineteen eight thirty.
There, there was those, a correction, we have to change some of the dark lines on the map, but if you look at the bulk table, you will see that lot number thirty-eight has nineteen thousand square feet, lot number thirty-six has thirty-two thousand square feet. And all of the requirements of the zone, that way oversized.
Moving on, just so, I, another question came up before, so if you can help, what is the point in two eighty-eight variance?
The two eighty-eight variance is that if you don't have enough street frontage, you must go to the zoning board, and what they call it, get a permit, so that you can use, have it, if you don't have the required, I believe it's ten feet or something like, they don't have the required ten feet, you have to get a two eighty-eight variance to use the back lot. It's a procedural thing that has to go to the zoning board. However, this is not changing, we already had the two eighty-eight in the original lot, so we're adjusting the right-of-way, the back of it.
And I appreciate Ms. Yost's information about the subdivision as opposed to the lot line change, and that changes things, but when you read it to us, and when we read out the uh, the comments about county planning, number one, you wanted it override, because it's a subdivision.
I can do it, I'll, I'll have, I'll.
It is subdivision, so we have to follow that.
I will.
And also, um, the, the comment from one, from one of the memos we got from Ms. Donnelly, says the current residence is a two-story structure, not a one-story structure, is that true? So, so it's all on the map here, twelve of the plants, plants in one story volume.
We took, we took around the existing.
Existing house.
That's two-story.
It says one story.
It's a, it's two-story.
So, to be clear, so, when, even though it's called a subdivision, we're not creating any new parcels of land, we're making one parcel bigger, one parcel smaller.
That's correct.
To include an existing used backyard to a real backyard of the property.
And getting the use of the garage.
Well, I'm saying part of the backyard.
Yes.
Okay, I'm clear, thank you.
I have no other comments right now. Just bud. Uh, you know, I mean, so you're intent is, you gotta sell the house and sell the lot?
Mm-hmm. And can I just make a comment quick? My reason for doing this, not only is to make the lot of my mother's house, it's not bigger and more useful, but we had it on market for six months, that time that came back, the lot's too small, that house is too tight, and I wanna forestall anyone ever being able to say, buy the house, demolish the house, and get access to the back. My father would have a fit if he found that, you know, it's done that, and I don't wanna do that to the neighbors. The way it's sitting up now, that house is, you know, more valuable, it's got the garage, it has the backyard. Hopefully somebody will buy it, and then don't want to be having one house in the back forever.
Well, it's probably.
It can't, not the way it's owned, yeah.
It's owned, well, it's owned, uh, ten thousand square feet, which is our.
I, I know, but if I, if I don't.
Three thousand square feet.
But if I don't get an access to a.
There's no access.
I can't think of it. In other words, if it doesn't come along with an embodied property, you get access to West Central Avenue or something like that.
You can't use the driveway.
Stay in one lot.
So you, you're saying, the way that somehow with the easement has the driveway.
Yeah.
You can only go one.
I can only go one lot.
Now, somebody bought the joint crack against it.
I, I, I get that.
I'm good. Thank you.
I don't.
I don't know.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm sorry. Clarification on lot number two.
All right, um, any other comments from the board? Down in the room, the public? Anybody interested in this project, please come up, say your case? Okay, I'm gonna limit it. Anybody interested, could we limit to, uh, three minutes?
Hi, your name?
Donald DeNoyles.
Could you spell your last name for me?
D E capital N O Y E L L E S.
And what's your last name, ah, your street address?
One ninety-five West Central Avenue, Pearl River. My property is adjacent to the Quinlan property. They don't have any road frontage, because that eighteen-foot right-of-way is my property, and they just have an ingress and egress right-of-way, with no way to get utilities to the back of that. So, I don't know how they can say they have road frontage, but they don't. That right-of-way was put in just for that garage, and for any other amount of traffic that's gonna be in there, I don't think it'd be a proper thing to do.
The utility easement is proposed on the existing Quinlan property now.
Yeah, it's ten foot wide.
Right.
And you're not allowed to put one utility above another one. I worked in, I've worked forty-five years in pipeline construction. You're not allowed to put one utility on top of nothing. I don't know how they're gonna put four or five different utilities into an eleven-foot area.
Water, gas.
Sewer, water, gas, electric, telephone, cable.
Carefully. We, we, we have a problem in the community that have the.
Not only that, but if, if they put a housing site back there, there's no way to get emergency vehicles in there.
Well, that was one of the comments that the fire department made. That was one of their comments, they want a, a, a road that will handle fire.
Yes, well, that eighteen-foot right-of-way on my property will not handle it.
Right.
Besides that, when you get near the entrance to that lot in the back, there's a big oak tree there, and it's only fourteen feet wide.
We're gonna have to take all those considerations, right?
Okay.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Anyone else?
Yeah.
Please step forward.
I can give you, like, Tricam.
Wait, 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 wait.
What's your last name?
Tricam.
How do you spell that?
T R I C A N O.
And your address?
Your name, West Washington Avenue. My property is, is next to the Quinlan property. Uh, I'd be much like for a resident there, but we have a statue, woods there. We have a lot of wildlife here, wild turkey, owls, pork, occasional red fox. Um, my big concern is that it would be re-subdivided over and over again, and I'd just, you know, and that would be stopped, we, we do that. Uh, I do have a letter that I'd like to submit. I did email it to the town, but then we kept that.
You give it to them. I'm sorry, sorry.
Thank you.
That's it, thank you very much. Anyone else? Do I have a motion to close the public?
Yeah, I'd like to speak.
Oh, hey, okay, one more.
I, my name is Lou Vertuzzi. And I live at two oh two West Central Avenue, diagonally across from the property. This kinda got new to me, I just got the letter in the mail like last week regarding this, and um, I would like to have some time to review this lot line change, if you guys have a chance to look at the plan for some time, to make your thoughts, and even if you had some confusion on what they're looking to do. And I don't, you know, this is like a preliminary hearing, I don't see a need to give a final at this point, till the public has had a thorough chance to see what they're looking to do. Okay, lot line change is a subdivision, and the subdivision to bring utilities back to the garage, and has that facilities decades, seems to be like they're looking to develop that further property in the back, which is, I'm going to argue, pointing out, including the garage property, including Quinlan property, which could create overdevelopment of the area. And that's my major concern, is what they're looking to do, and I would just like to look at this a little bit longer. You know, like, if you just postpone giving them a final tonight, to make that determination on this project. And that's my field this time, then next month, or when they get back from board, we can make, yeah, I appreciate it, then, to make a final, if you feel it's valid.
Okay, thank you.
Just one question, in terms of lot number two, so you're saying that you can only go one, one house there, so you are prepared to put covenant in the, in the deed that we put on your house building?
Well, I have to do a limited covenant, when I say a limited covenant, if it stays the way it is, yes, I would gladly do the covenant. However, if somebody else buys the property, and gives another accessibility, it would be improper covenant.
You're on, you're on, you're on, you're on Center Street, and you had to access the property?
Right, but if you're saying just to use that right-of-way, yes, I would covenant just that right-of-way over. Because it's, it's not up to both properties anyway. I will get, I will get it from the survey.
Yeah, let's see exactly what it says, right? You know, as far as making a proper decision, we'd need that authority.
Just talking, talking about the easement, Mr. Young, I was brought up the comment that the easement is on his property.
That's correct.
And one of the comments said that the road had to be reinforced to be stronger.
And one of the comments said that the road had to be reinforced to be stronger for emergency vehicles. He's saying it's not. Who would have to do that work?
The fire department is demanding that it be made strong enough, it would have to be made strong enough.
And does he have to agree to that as well?
I'm gonna have to look, I'm gonna have to look, I believe, I'll check the, the actual requirement of the right-of-way easement. The right-of-way easement says the ingress and egress, I believe he does have the right to reinforce it. He has a right to repair it and reinforce it.
But I'm saying, it sounded like he wasn't interested in doing that. What happened? He didn't want to reinforce it and it's on his.
No, no, if the, if the owner of the property, which was Quinlan, had a right to do that, it runs with this. The, the state has a right to do what Mr. Quinlan had a right to do.
You have to say that in deed.
Well, I have to, I have to see, I have to see what the ingress easement right-of-way says. In other words, the, he has a right of ingress and egress right now. And missing ingress means you have a right to get the accessibility to the back garage.
Right.
He had a right to make repairs if there were potholes there, he had a right to make repairs. He had a right to reinforce the road. I believe he has a right to meet the requirements of the fire department.
I just think the question is, the rights were granted to access a garage, not a second one?
No, no, the rights are granted to the access to the back property.
Okay.
Is it the right, well, one of the problems is it's for the whole, the rights are for the whole piece of property.
Right.
You complicate that by moving the property smaller, moving the lines, you're putting that with the first property. That kind of takes that out of the mix for some extent.
Well.
It could be interpreted that way, you know?
So my question goes back, I'd like to make sure that that is something that can be done before we decide on doing it.
Well, I, I told Mr. Mandel that I would get, get a document showing the rights, and I'm going to get the town attorney showing the rights with the ingress egress. Let's hold on.
Uh, just one question. Is any back, back property on that lot number two, any of that wetlands?
Any of the what?
Any of that testing areas, wetlands?
No. There are no wetlands in that area at all.
Okay, thank you. And if I, if I remember correctly, originally this property, are you thinking before you bought it, there was a paper street that ran back to.
Yes.
Right.
Through the church parking lot.
He'll stay on there.
I, I think it only went up to this where the property was. And it was, it was the town.
It went right up this property to the twenty-sixth.
The other, the other properties acquired.
Yes.
Twenty-foot straight. And there's been other subdivisions back.
We did look at it, but a lot of people have moved onto that parcel for many, many years and were annoyed with it.
Oh, no, no. Okay, uh, we want to do a similar. We did. Closing. Oh, yeah. Motion for those of us, one, boys, just maybe a second. All in all, favor?
Aye.
Close, done. Okay. We want to see the easement before we do it.
Well, can we get preliminary and continue? And we get, in other words, I was looking for final, but I would like to get preliminary. So if I have to go through 28A, I will. If I have to supply the information, I will. If it turns out we can't do it, then we'll stop. But I would like to continue based on the fact that we're not getting final.
Do I get a? I mean, if they drink that what they need, they can give a final in one shot. Well, but he has to go through 28A.
Have to go through 28A, have to go to the zoning board.
So you want to give preliminary? Start a break? I'm not going to find one. The subdivision, you want to give a preliminary? And then they have to come back with the 28A if they get it, and they have to come back with the egress.
The exact time.
Oh, right, right.
Exactly what's permitted in that.
At that point, if everything is resolved, then we can go further with it. Okay, so I'm on my way. I have a motion for preliminary. Motion for preliminary conditions. Okay. Do you think?
Yeah.
Yeah, we are, we are. I just want to find out who's for this, okay? Okay, a motion for validation.
I'll make one for validation.
Second. Okay. Uh, Nick Deck?
Thank you, all in favor?
All in favor?
Aye.
I'm sorry. Nick Deck, motion for Nick Deck?
Motion for Nick Deck, second.
So, Mr. Swinney, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Mister, all conditions, I have a motion?
Preliminary.
Okay, yeah. Condition, the first thing is you have to have that. Easement. Okay. You have no initial comments? Jane Slaven, Morris Kent, three items. Department of Fire and Urban Management, Bruce Peters, March seventh, two items. Whoop, engineering, no. Rocket County Department of Planning, March fifth, that's three items. Rocket County Highway, that's two. Rocket County Sewer, that's two. County of Morristown Fire Prevention, that's just the one state where they want the driveway, if needed, to be stabilized. And also there's a letter from Jameson dated March eleventh. A letter from Donnelly, March thirteenth.
You have one of them, right?
And whatever, the letter that was just submitted.
Right.
Okay, and then let the, after we agreed that to put a covenant on the back piece of property, the one lot subdivision, unless it was required accessible, right? Access to the property. Okay, do I have a second? More favor?
Aye.
Close, done. Good, thank you, sir. Okay, the next application is approved, distribution for site plan, D B nineteen dash sixteen. Okay, sir, can you please, please.
Okay, um, this project had the need for a plan with several years ago in which the company was expanding, and that being they built the building to the rear of the company, which they're gonna use for warehouse purposes, which they explained to the board and they got their approval. And the construction is taking place right now. What they're doing now is they're trying to upgrade the front part of the building. The building was originally built in nineteen eighty, it's deteriorating a little bit. What they're doing is they're doing internal improvements. They're also doing some front areas where the parking is just not laid out properly. So what they're doing is they're gonna re-figure any parking, building curbs and things of that sort. And the third thing they're gonna do, which is gonna explain to them, the front is just gonna remain more contemporary to the time period, which is today. So primarily, we're not expanding the building in any way. What we're primarily doing here is just changing the look of the building, the use of the building inside, and we're upgrading the parking around the area. That's pretty much the project.
And what do you suggest in the front?
Just in the front, and I think a little bit on the side, am I correct?
Correct.
Yeah, the, the work area, the limited improvements that we're looking for right now on the floor, start right at the entrance here and then wrap around to the side of the building. And as Mr. Brenner indicated, not changing the building footprint in any way, it remains exactly as it does today. We're simply taking the existing parking lot that's in the front of the building here, here, and here, and completely redoing it, new curbing, new pavement, all new landscaping along the front portion of the building. And then obviously, the facade improvements as well. That's a photo of existing conditions that are out there today. This is what the building looks like today. And then the building will receive a complete new skin. And that's where the area will look like in the future. Again, it's the same building footprint, same two-story building, it's just getting a complete rehappening on the front portion. But that's the same height.
Same as that.
Same height. We're not having, ripping the facade off and playing with it.
Part of that, part of that's the angle of the camera lines.
Yeah, it's the same.
That has a slight to it.
Yeah, it's like.
Right, so that is straight parapleth, so that's, that's where the, it's the.
Yeah, there's a mansard on that.
With the improvements, just a small point, parking space account remains exactly the same. Start from the twenty-seven parking spaces along the front portion of the property. We actually reduced the previous areas by about three thousand square feet with all the improvements they were doing. So we're working within that same box, we're just completely happening, that's all.
The rent is your property, right?
Correct.
What's happening over there in the east end? Here? Nothing. This is the existing, the existing piece of property fringing on?
Yes.
I remember one time on the top level there, they had parking on the side and that out during.
That was parking.
That's a hill over there. Yeah, that area.
Right, and there we had a parking, but again, that was all removed, that's part of the modifications.
Thank you. Mr. Mandel? Uh, let me, uh, let me. Project review and no additional comments? Morris Kent, Jane Slaven, Mr. Bree. Department of Fire and Engineering, Bruce Peters, Mr. Bree. Corporate Engineering. The information provided in the outline was designed for more management to demonstrate potential significant impacts with respect to drainage, stormwater, and other things. We therefore recommend that this group distribution for a site plan, park, block, their site plan be approved for drainage, so that we can give up project comments, and there are two items. Rocket County Department of Planning, March fifth. It's not in the jurisdiction. Rocket County, no. March first, that is one. Rocket County Highway, March fourth, that's two. Rocket County Sewer, November twenty-seventh, that's two. And I have EPA, Morristown, Rocket County Highway, Rocket County Hill. And that's it. Thank you, I'll show.
Did you say Brookford?
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. Mandel?
So there's no change in the circulation of the traffic around?
There's.
There's no change in the circulation?
No.
The traffic, okay.
Access points, all of them, exactly the same.
All right. In addition to correction on the permit, the building permit is Jane Slaven. Also, you may want to go back to the, the application for managers board, change that also for project description.
We, she's, she's suggesting that we just modify the applicable application because of the new front, which we will do.
Okay, now, does it, both of them say, it doesn't mention that the front is being put on, okay.
Kind of, that's what we're gonna modify, we're gonna give her a new application.
Okay.
And merge with this one, so we go to.
Okay, yeah, because it's also on the other application, that's all I'm saying. It's also on the, it's on the managers board, also application, with the proper designation. Is there gonna be any new traffic generated as a result of this?
New traffic?
Yeah.
Yeah, this is, and I think Dan could speak to this a little bit more. This is to accommodate and give a facelift to the existing office space that's there right now. The number of employees will remain the same. They anticipate some growth over the years? Probably yes, but it's not any significant increase from where it is.
But at this point, it won't be, so therefore, you won't need a traffic study as Rocket County Highway recommended?
Correct.
Because there's no additional traffic. Okay. And it's, are you sure the area, number fifteen, what, yes, what animals and habitats are threatened or endangered on the site or adjacent property?
Uh, I'll go back and double-check the answer to that, but I believe the reason why that's checked, yes, there's. I'll, I'll go back and check before I speak, I just want to make sure I have the right answer.
That's all we.
There's nothing, that's not necessarily on the property, it's in the vicinity, it would be within several thousand feet. So that's why that gets checked.
Okay, we just clarify.
There's nothing on the property.
Okay, that's no problem, okay. So, what's the fact?
I have no questions.
Thank you. Mr. Bjorn?
Uh, nothing, Mr. Chandler.
It was Friday. Okay, uh, will it open up to the public? Anybody who wishes to see government, please come up, sign in. Motion for those public session? Motion for those public session, on second?
Where were you?
Okay, I'm sorry, I'm. Did you see, sir, I'm sorry. Did you say state your name and address?
Okay, my name is Pat Mcil, N U R R A Y, one thirty-eight Penn Court, Orangeburg, New York.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Okay, I, I have, I have talked with Subaru in the past, Deputy Executive Barry Weiss, what's his name? Goes back to when you'd have trucks that would park, they're just running at the midnight and blocking the fire line. Sometimes you'd have twenty-five and forty-foot trucks packed waiting to unload. Okay, um, that's something in history. I understand that they're considering putting a new garage base in the approximate location where the trucks use the double platform pass, right in back of the property, I live on. Mechanic base, I was told.
I don't see any, you know, changes.
There's no days in the back.
No?
There's no, there's no older ones in the back.
Okay, um. Going with my speech here. Talking about the blocking of car lanes. They recently, January, I think, they were, they were working round the clock and making a lot of noise in the new building that they have. I, I called the Orangeburg Police Department and they sent a car over there and in a short period of time, lights went out, there was one way. Are there any time limits in this new building that they're putting up? Is it a nine-to-six, nine-to-six operation? Or are they?
We can ask, what are your hours of operation?
Same, 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 seven to seven. And, and this one complaint, although it was justified, the complaint contract, they never had permission to do it. He was told never to do it again, it's nothing.
Okay, thank you. Uh, the hours of operation, seven to seven?
Seven, and is that Monday through Friday?
Monday through Friday, no weekend work?
Uh, occasion, very occasionally, but.
Okay, very occasional, Monday through Friday.
Okay, so, so now the area, believe where they put new curbing, is, is that on the, the side of the building?
The front of the building.
Front.
The front.
Front, so, okay, that would be.
That would be on the. On the right side. On the right side, that's, would be on the east and the south.
East side. Just to clarify, I'm sure that it's all within the.
Just to clarify, I want to share that it's all within the existing parking area that's there. We're not making it.
I think that old curbs and rebuilt.
Right, show me, um, this is the top of the circle right here, and, uh, our home is up this way. There's, and the, the route of traffic, they're, they're building a wall up to block the lights at night when the trucks are coming in. What is the rep, can you show me the route on this diagram?
Could you please direct everything to the fore, and then we'll actually add it.
All right, just, you want me to start over again with that?
Yes, but.
Okay, all right. I'm curious now, with the route of traffic, when it's coming into Ramland Park, when it comes around to the top of the circle, what is the path? Is this red light the path of traffic?
No, that's the, that's the, that's the property line.
Okay.
Well, see where the gray areas, where the white, small white stripes are, that's the traffic pattern.
Okay, okay.
Can, can we just, just address that slightly as well?
Yeah.
Right now, under existing conditions, and this was addressed during the initial application, trucks circulated around the entire perimeter of the hallway. With the new design as it is right now, all the loading bays are on the west side. All truck traffic will come in here, stay to the west side of the tra, uh, the building, and that was one of the conditions, the approval, that we're not gonna be circulating trucks around the perimeter of the entire building.
Yeah, that's great, I hear that. So there's nothing, there's nothing planned here, uh, this, this is something that was gonna be a smaller design on the parking lines, is that right? It's just individual spaces here?
No, no, there's no additional space, same amount of garden, they're gonna change the front of the building and fix the front.
And then we're gonna have lights built into the wall here, is that right, I recall?
All day, down the lane.
Down, okay, all right, so that's, you're trying to the mic here.
You have about fifteen, twenty seconds.
Okay, so, that's, that's primarily, uh, the gist of what I had, but, uh, in the, in the past, the, uh, uh, they didn't compile it with the hours, and we also have ISIS on the other side of the circle, and there, sometimes it gets started when it's one, two, three o'clock in the morning, it's seven.
That's it, yeah, thank you very much.
I'll put it down, okay?
Thank you. Please come up, state your name.
Steve DelSavio, two sixty-two Trent Place, Orangeburg. I just had one question, from the plans I saw, I saw it on the east side of the building, something about, uh, repair shop inside the building? Did I see that?
Maybe something inside the building.
What?
They're talking outside.
They just got it. No, no, it, it just said three new overhead doors. Are they just replacing existing doors, or are they new overhead doors?
Isn't that that little, right on the east side?
That right there?
Those are the existing overhead doors, two of which are being closed off.
Where, where's this internal repair shop?
There's no.
Internal repair shop. Of course, that's another fee is coming up.
No, they're, they're.
Could've sworn I saw.
They don't fix cars.
They swore on the plans, a repair shop, it said one.
Oh, they don't fix cars.
Okay. Once and I fixed the cars there. Said, said something about sixteen lifts, or even lifts or something inside.
Yeah, so there, there are lifts, uh, there are bays, and there are lifts, uh, because new cars are brought in, uh, to, uh, train, to show, uh, you know, the, the various aspects of the, of the vehicles. They're not repairs, they're new cars, uh, so they're, they're brought in as demonstrations. Um, and yes, there are lifts in the building to, uh, to view the cars and to, uh, to do, to view the cars, but it's not repairable.
Okay, so not repairable, so.
Correct.
Okay.
So, are the overhead doors there?
Yes.
So there are, there are three overhead doors?
On, on the side? Yeah, right here. Yes, the plan shows.
It shows, uh, three different bays of six, six.
There, there are overhead doors there currently.
Okay, so it, it's the same truck work, is that going on now at work? It's the loading bays in there? Not the loading bays.
They're not loading bays.
Where they work, is that a good, is that an addition to inside the building? That wasn't, that isn't there now, where now you're gonna start bringing sixteen cars every day to come in through the side here to work? I mean, there's a noise, it's.
It's, it's seven-to-seven operation, so there's not gonna be noise either.
Yeah, but nobody wants to hear, like, when you go to show Ford, you hear pneumatic hammers taking tires off, running all day long, making noise.
It's not, this is not a repair shop, it's a training center.
Training center, so they're gonna be training, you have to take ti, decide to take a tire off, there's noise. I'm just saying, it's, I'm just surprised, it will be a little bit, are these there now, is all I wanna know?
Yes.
So they're there now? So you're preparing, you got, all these bays are in here now, where they're working, ready, and it's gonna be the same operation that's going on now, is what I'm asking. Yes, the operation is. Okay.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, anybody else? Yes, sir.
Mitch Shalom.
Wait, so is that his last name?
Mitch Shalom, S H A L O M, seventy-six Minute Man Circle in Orangeburg. If the operation is seven-to-seven, then why are the lights on all night?
I think during construction time, they, they, uh, just for construction, is it, I know the work.
This is on the second floor in the warehouse, on all night.
It's on the second floor.
The, the, the second floor.
Um, are they interiorized?
They're interiorized.
Well, they can do that, they're allowed to have interior lights. They can't, the exterior lights are what we, we control.
If they're on all night, and if there's nobody in there, why are they on all night? Can something be done, like, put a cover on all the lights? I can show you pictures.
No, I understand that, um, I, I don't think we have any jurisdiction over interior lights.
Whether they're on or off.
Do we?
I guess we guys see, I, is there a reason that they're on all night?
I, I don't believe that the lights are on all, all night, um, but.
Can you repeat that, please?
He said he does not believe that they're on.
However.
It's currently, it's currently under construction, so I certainly can't speak to, you know, what lighting is required for, for the construction, for, for safety and security, et cetera. And there would be some internal lights on for the same thing, safety and security, uh, that probably are, are on, during the night. It's not an operation.
So I do know that any new construction site, they need on all the interior lights for safety. Once the project is completed and turned over and the tenant goes in there, then they control the lighting. But prior to that, for safety reasons, ocean requirements, the lighting stays on.
And, and I. During operations, because we're not operating all through the site, we wouldn't. When, when the operation is finished, and it's seven oh one P M, and the lights are still on, what do we do then?
Well, the United States, all the police department.
Seven oh one, or would you let it? Last night? Then.
The windows aren't in yet, they're just open, in, in the panels, that's part of the problem. The second thing is, is that this board and the acting board were, had requested that all of the windows be translucent and non-transparent. So once the windows get in, you will see light behind it, but you won't see it clearly unless it will be diffused.
But, it's very annoying.
Okay, I mean, we can talk to the contractor.
Sir, if you go over to J P Wolf and Chase, the Rockland Psychiatric Site, you'll see that the lights are on there all night. As he said, it's an ocean regulation during construction. If there's something happening in there, and he definitely has to respond, it's for the safety of the first responders as well. So the lights must be on during construction. And you can go right by Rockland Psychiatric, and you'll see all the lights that are on there during the construction for the bays. And as they said, all the windows, and that was one of the requirements when we approved the original, uh, building, the addition there, was that they were all transparent, more so, not the lights, but translucent, because of privacy, because people are afraid that these people are looking at, at them and their property, so you can't see through them. That was all part of the original specifications and conditions, which they will be complying with, that'll be a big difference, I think.
The second point that I'd like to make is, there's tremendous amount of noise, construction, Saturday and Sunday also.
Well, I think there was, it was something brought up, where the contractor was working there on the weekend, he was not given permission to, and has since been corrected.
Okay, thank you very much.
The noise is, is very loud. It made you jump.
Frank, what's your name? Frank, what's your name?
Spell your last name. M A R C H E S C.
And your address?
Tulane Dean, Betts Ross Drive.
Go ahead.
He's, he's right by the lights.
Okay, so we just explained the lights.
At night time, nobody working, why is, why is the light gonna be on?
Sir, sir, if you listen, it's under construction, it's ocean regulations, it's federal regulations, it's the safety. The lights must be kept on in construction sites all the time.
Even if nobody's been.
Doesn't matter, doesn't matter. If something happens there, there's a fire, it's for the safety of the first responders. If, as I said to the other gentleman, if you go over to Rockland Psychiatric Site, you will see a tremendous static processing facility building. All night long, those lights are on, I go by there, I drive by, the lights are on, go by there now, the lights are on. It's a federal requirement, and they're not gonna be fine by federal.
You drive by, and you leave there, when you leave there, and look out the window, it's just bright lights all night long.
It's a safety requirement, sir. It's a federal requirement.
Soon as they come to stage, where they put the glass in, the glass will reduce the lighting, and it won't be a bright light, it'll be like a, a very. Cloud, cloud, so, the cloud light won't.
It's like they give something out, 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 the lights are.
Pause back, right now, they're trying, they're trying to get done. No, no, that's what I'm saying, the lights are not in, so you know, the lights are on. Lights have to stay on until the building is done, until the glass is in, and then it'll change.
Okay.
Okay, and you know, it's, they're, they're very loud.
Well, well, we think.
They're not on there, they're.
Excuse me.
When the construction.
Was your voice there, from one person at a time? Um, when there's, when they stop working there, there's no noise, and the windows are in, you're gonna be, look out your window and see that you're done.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
The reason why they're gonna be producing a lot of noise, uh, as the construction is, yes, but you don't have to dump big rocks on, on top of the truck, or whatever they're doing. You're outside, and it should jump up in the air.
They're trying to get the building done as soon as they can, as quick as they can.
Yeah, but I'm pretty sure they can do a better work, that can down the noise. I see a lot of buildings going up all over the place, I never heard any noise like that.
Okay, okay. Anything else?
Mr. Brenner doesn't leave over there anymore, now, now he doesn't say anything. If you, it was leaving there.
Sir, sir. Sir.
Yeah, yeah.
Don, turn around. Sir, that was uncalled for. Yeah, sir, I was, I was here, it's, it was approved. You're over three minutes, so.
I was here when, when, when it was approved, and I, it was, it was okay, it was, it was quiet earlier, nothing's been quiet, it's been hell, no, that's not the work going on.
Thank you, anybody else? Yes, ma'am, state your name for the record, please.
Hey. Hello, good evening, I'm Heather Hurley, two, two Hobart Street in Pro River. Um, I just wanted to, um, touch upon what Mr. Mandel brought up, um, earlier, and I don't really think that final approval is warranted right now until we find out about the endangered species and construction. I do believe there may be a D E C law on the books that, um, deals with disturbances of, um, bald eagle nests, if there are live bald eagle nests in the area while construction is going on. And I believe there might also be an issue with bats in the area. I know that that was an issue with the Hillside Project in Pro River, that construction could not start until, for, um, a certain amount of months because of the bat population. So, um, until that issue is, uh, figured out, and since they did check on bats, yes, I believe, on the shore environmental form, I don't believe that final approval should be given tonight, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Warren, if I could comment on that?
Yes, but.
I, I think it's, um, that comment is entirely accurate. I don't think you could give a na, na, negative declaration today, so.
Whoa, 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 absolutely.
We're only looking at the parking lot.
Please come. What being brought up here is totally, totally not involved in this project. The bats are involved in taking down trees, the eagles have been searched and searched, there is no D E C control on this project that will. Are they?
Do we have anything to report that? I mean, if that's checked off on a form that's before the board, it doesn't need to be explained.
The bats, they say that you cannot take down certain trees under certain periods of time. No trees are coming down on this project, that's number one. As for the bald eagles, the bald eagles, they are not in the radius of the bald eagles that they're talking about. These are red herrings that are being thrown out just to stop projects, and that is a problem because it's costing clients a lot of money. They're costing clients a lot of money, please.
If you're trying to check that off.
Please, please. The O E X, please.
It hasn't been explained, if it's explained and the board feels comfortable, they can go forward.
Can we address that just a little? Mr. Brenner is accurate, the bat removal, the bats species has to do with tree removal. Tree removal on this project was done during the initial stage. This doesn't involve any land clearing, it's working within the existing area. Uh, the bat, or excuse me, the bald eagle, uh, question mark, there is a bald eagle's nest, that was something that we dealt with, this board recalls, with the Brightview Senior Living application, that was adjacent to the, uh, Lake Tepan. There is a bald eagle's nest in the vicinity of Lake Tepan. We are, the criteria is you need to be six hundred or six hundred and sixty feet away from that location. We are well beyond that distance. That's why, when it's in the immediate area, that box does get checked, yes. However, we are not within any radius that would affect, uh, that species.
And, and like, what I just said too, and Mr. Brenner said, that there was no land clearing, the only, this application is for right now, is adjusted.
Hundred percent accurate.
The parking lot in the front of the building with no, basically disturbance in the back.
Correct, yes.
Okay.
Just to point to your point, you were saying that if the box is checked, yes.
Well, it's, uh, up to the board, if you think you've heard enough and that satisfies you, if you think there needs to be more information that's brought towards you, it's within your hands. If you think you have enough, and you have enough to vote for a negative, then you have enough. If you don't think you have enough, you should ask them to come back.
All right, let's see if there's any more public, uh, comments. Is there anybody else that wishes to comment on this? Please come up, state your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Tanya Whitk.
Wait, 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 I'm just calling last name.
W I T K.
And your address?
One oh nine Uport Avenue, Tepan. I would just like to know if they surveyed the area for the bats, or for the, um, bald eagle nest.
I think it was just explained by this gentleman, where there is a nest, uh, I'm guessing it's quarter mile away?
It might even be more.
Okay, when Brightview Senior Settlement Center we put it, that's where the nest is, over that area, and, um, the, and it wasn't considered an issue then, that this project is much further away from it, um, so.
So when was that done? Excuse me, when was the Brightview done?
Just opened.
It's open a year ago, maybe the process started two years ago.
So it was like two years ago that you have that information?
Uh, yeah, it's a public record, you can check the, uh, town clerk.
It's the same information that was made available by the D E C today.
Right.
The same information.
Okay.
Thank you very much. Anyone else?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir, please state your name and address for the record.
Scotsboro, forty-two Yale Terrace.
Wait, um, spell your last name.
S K U R.
S K U R, and I'm sorry, what, Yale?
Forty-two Yale Terrace.
Yale?
Yale.
Yeah.
Yes, sir. Is the building use changing at all?
No.
Okay. They're just, I'll do the small buildings. Okay, thank you.
Just for the record, Brightview got final approval on March twenty-third of two thousand sixteen.
Just open for.
It's open. I don't even think it's officially open. Uh, is there anybody else that wishes to make comment on this project? Can I have a motion, both public affairs? Mr. Mandel, all favor?
Aye.
Opposed, no. Okay, um, what do you guys wanna do on this? Are there any other species on the inside of the whole piece that is called a bat?
Nothing. There's nothing.
It's checked off on the E A F.
But again, that area, that E A F is a duplicate of what was submitted with the original application, and then updated to reflect the addition of this disturbance area along the front end of the property. That area was vetted, and that had to do with clearing along the backside of the property, all of which was done in accordance with this board's requirements and all other requirements. Again, we're in the front portion of the property, there is no additional land clearing requirement.
You're currently under construction, the back, which was approved by the board?
Yes.
And, uh, what's your estimated time of completion on the back part, the timeframe?
The max.
Yeah.
Uh, the building's closed now, so, you know, it mostly is internal work at this point, it's a, uh, four by months.
It's a four by months.
Okay, because you still gotta pay for the whole outside area though.
Outside, that should be finally paid.
Right.
Inside.
Yeah, just the outside.
Yeah.
Do you have a rough idea as to when you would be installing the bats? Wouldn't that be one of the final things?
I don't know, windows?
Probably within next month or two. If Lawrence Lacks being put down now, and once that's complete, they'll be able to work on the surface of this lab.
I know our attorney has mentioned something about issues. I don't know what the board feel, whether we can go through and give a neg deck, or if we should look for more information. That's, it's up to the board, you don't, all the board.
I don't know how to give a neg deck. They're working it now, so.
Like?
Yeah, I'm okay.
Mr. Young?
I know she's.
Mr. Swinney?
It's not a major issue.
Okay, Mr. Mandel?
Well, it's checked off, I'd like to see a little bit more, but some, my opinion.
Would you be happy to present up on this?
Well, even by all accounts, you still have a.
Okay, I'm just, I want everybody to stay with us.
I don't want. No, I just said it's checked, and I'd like to see a little bit more, because I know, I've seen the bald eagles over there, so I know they're in the area.
They fly over my house, but they're not nesting anywhere in this project.
Right, right, oh, as far as I know, but I'm saying, is there anything else because of the fact?
Well, this is all addressed with the original document.
That's from a couple of years. And what else was addressed besides the bald eagle? What else was mentioned in the, in the, uh? In the E A F.
Nothing else that I was aware of besides the bats.
Yeah, exactly, don't remember anything else besides that at this point in time. That's, my memory isn't that, a couple of years ago, but I remember.
I can't read it, it's been stated before, there is no land clearing, that was a suspicion.
Well, I know that, I know there's no land clearing.
Part of the property.
And it's not over through, I think April, which was something that affected bats and certain specific types of trees. The eagles I know are there. And are there any other species that's what I'm asking?
No, I understand what you're saying, yeah.
No.
Not that I'm aware of, there's nothing.
Okay, well, let me just throw down the board. I asked for a motion for leadage, let's see what happens.
No second motion for leadage.
I'll make a motion here.
Okay.
Second.
Second by one. Okay, all favor?
Aye.
Opposed? No, no, okay, motion for a neg deck.
I'll make a motion there.
Mr. Bond, second.
Second.
Mr. Young, all favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
One opposed.
One opposition, Mr. Mandel. Okay, um, so, reflected that, we give them, actually, we can give them a final. Because we, it's only curves and, or curves and facade, right? Okay, um.
Well, I think conditions.
It's gonna be a condition.
Doesn't come back here and back.
No, they have to, I think that would, we can give them a condition.
We can, we.
That Akabord approves it.
We can, we can say they don't have to come back, but if we don't, then they have to come back.
Okay, because normally what we would do on some of these projects, not everything, you say that condition and by Akabord's approval, they would be able to find it. Akabord says no, then they don't. So what do you want to do? Want to give a final?
Okay.
No, subject of work.
Okay. Pulling the board, let's see what they said.
Pulling the board. Mr. Swinney, would you like to do it?
I guess looking at the plan, okay.
Mr. Young?
It's fine.
Camera, it's fine.
Okay, okay, fine.
And I agree with the final conditions, okay? So, final conditions.
I'm opposed.
Mr. Bond? And the conditions are. Project here has no additional. Jan Slavin, March tenth, has three. Bruce Peters, March eighth, has three. Victor Engineering, has three. Rockland Planning, has nine. Rockland Health, has one. Rockland Pirate, uh, two. Rockland Sewer, two. And that's it. Can I have a second?
Second, one, one thing.
Oh, yeah.
Just to.
Like the, try and make, kick those windows in, as well as. Yes, make sure that, make sure they're ordered.
Yeah, I'll take time to come in. And this guy will be ready to.
That's the slams that have to put those in there, and help out the neighbors. Okay, second.
Chair, if they can just check and see if there are any others you want to go into file, but let's see if there's any other species that would be involved there, despite clarifying probably.
Okay. Any other major, uh? Okay, a lot of species that are in there. Yeah, it's in the.
Oh, it's your updated list. It's your updated list.
Okay, I got a, okay, can I have a second?
Second.
Okay, so you know, all favor?
Aye.
Aye, all right. I hear very much.
I hear that they all voted out.
Yes, that's the letter. Okay, the next item is. Two one five South Green Bush Road, slight. Leading nineteen, has thirty.
I should buy.
We should stay.
I should say.
I'm refusing myself for the discussion.
Let's begin.
Thank you.
And the next one.
Yes, I'm sorry, there's two.
Need some help? Okay, uh, everybody in the audience, please, uh, please, the recipe's always there, so if they turn out here. If you can here, the seats up front, please come up front.
One one five first. One twenty-five is first.
Yes. Here. Mr. Brenner? Oh, I just. Yes, sir. You're working? Yes, sir. Okay. Even though we're doing one twenty-five, South Green Bush Road first, I do want to tell the board that two projects are co-mangled. One twenty-five and one fifty-five are co-mangled, two items. Item number one is the drainage, which you will see from the drainage report that you're gonna get from your unsold. And the second one is a traffic study, which we are doing right now, which again combines with two projects. And now, we'll go ahead and do one at a time, please on the, the argument of those two items. Because I'm gonna address that right now.
Mr. Warren, if I could just suggest for efficiency's sake, why don't we just address both at the same time? You have to vote on each individually, but just so people don't have to get up twice and say basically the same thing. Let's have basically both represented at the same time, and then opening it up to the public, so you just have to vote on each individual.
Do you have an issue then, Mr. Brenner? No. I don't want to, in fact, I prefer. Okay. Okay, good. Now, one twenty-five is an existing building that exists there right now. You take a look at it, it's been there for many, many years. It was built originally for, as a distribution center for gold sliding cars. Gold cars in the United States came through that process area, before it went to Newark, where they became the distributor of new cars at that time. The building was there for many years, and once Goldsaw moved out, it was rented out to several tenants. We now have a bus company there, we have many trucking companies, things of that sort. The owners of the company right now want to expand the warehouse area and efforts for the area. They want to take down some of the office area, because the office area, there is really very, very little demand in Rockland County, especially in the town of Orange, town of Orange area. So what they're proposing to do in one twenty-five is to build a addition to the warehouse that they have there right now. If we're doing both at the same time. One fifty-five, again, had approved from this board for a warehouse there at one time. It was never built from the prior owners. What this owner's doing right now is building a warehouse at one fifty-five. Again, one which was approved by prior board many years ago. So primarily what we're doing is we're building two warehouse areas, common things that we handle in terms of the drainage, common things that we handle in terms of the traffic. As will be explained to you, it was designed specifically to stay within the commercial part of the area, and in no way affect or try to make sure that the residential part of the area, which is further to the north, is in any way affected by the project. I would like the engineer to go into details and explain the project, and then the architect will explain the project. Whoever wants to go first?
I'm gonna go first.
Okay.
Good evening, Harry Postkansler, from Postkansler Scott Architects. Thank you very much. As Mr. Brenner described, this is two projects. We were asked at the review meeting to create a drawing that showed both projects together. So we've done one fifty-five on your left, and one twenty-five on the right. These drawings are turned for the purpose of getting them on one drawing, from the drawings that I'll describe later when I do each individual lot. The existing two hundred and sixty thousand foot warehouse section of the building at one twenty-five include, has in front of it, a training building, and it has an office segment. Those two front small low buildings are, the plan is to remove them. In place of that would be an expansion of the existing warehouse, but will have one great difference, and that is, it's a higher ceiling than the existing. These warehouses from fifty years ago no longer meet the criteria that a good warehouse, what's referred to as a big box warehouse, would require. Still within the forty foot height limit that you require, but unlike the twenty foot and the twenty-two foot pieces that are in the back, twenty-four feet in the back. So we've created that both of these, which generate far less traffic than normal warehousing because of the nature of the way they, and people working there, because it's an open warehouse with almost no or very little office component to it. So these two buildings are considered that kind of new use, which we think is the appropriate, because that's what the market is looking for. And the uses that have been here, I have to say that I've been the architect of record for the prior owner for about twenty years, through the different tenancies in this building. And we've been looking and talking to multiple tenants for many, many years, and haven't found that for that building. Nor, the office wing has been used on and off for a number of different kinds of companies, partial, and then combined with some of the warehouse uses. So the intent is to remove that, to remove those small buildings, and add a new forty foot warehouse in the front. On this property further to the north, and north is to the left on this drawing, but it will be up on the rest of the drawings that are used. On this drawing, that's a brand new building, the prior approval actually had the same amount of coverage, but it was more parking lot and less footprint, because the use that that prior application wanted was what's referred to as a flex building, which has a higher occupancy for people and less for the warehousing. And so the ratio was that the building was pretty much in the same place on the south end of the property, but there was more parking on the north end. The other thing that we've done in this application that we think is particularly important is that there's a hundred foot buffer to the residential neighborhood immediately to our north. And your ordinance insists there be nothing in that, and of course, that's what we're doing. But the more important part is that the truck loading component of this building, of the one fifty-five building, is being shared with the driveway that is on the north side of one twenty-five, so that the heavy truck loading that would be closest to the residential area here is now between the two buildings. And that's part of the overall plan, to keep the kind of noise and traffic that would be generated by trucks further away from the residential area. So in fact, the entire building now becomes a buffer between the residential zone and the more industrial aspect of the building. The loading dock that exists on the south side of the existing building is being expanded. That's the one that faces Netflix, and I'm drawing a blank on the name of the building next door.
Nice Pack.
Pardon?
Nice Pack.
Nice, Nice Pack, excuse me, yes. So that loading dock isn't really changing, it's just being expanded onto that south side, right? So now, more specifically, and we were asked at the review meeting to show an elevation of both of the buildings on one drawing, exactly in scale with what they are. And what you'll see is, they're very long, the two of them together along the street, but they're relatively low, relative to their, to their length. So this is the building that I'll show you in more detail for one fifty-five, and that's the expansion for one twenty-five.
Is one fifty-five uncleared?
It's partially cleared, it has trees.
Very partially cleared, I have a fair say.
There's a space along this edge, which in past lives was used for some truck parking. There used to be another small building here about fifteen years ago that was knocked down by Worldwide, the prior owner. But that, and that area is starting to get overgrown, actually, it's not being quite beautiful.
So a lot of trailers there.
Right, in, right in here.
Correct.
Right, exactly. And that's part of the loading dock of the new building, in exactly the same place that it's always been. Thank you. So now, slightly more detail, and I'll leave all the engineering components to the engineer to give you more information. But the project, now you have to turn your head, your back, Green Bush is now on the side, okay? And this is the existing building, and we're moving it forward, towards Green Bush. The existing driveway will be slightly reconfigured to get around, to reach the existing loading that's here on the south side, and the additional loading that we're doing. Dotted lines underneath here show where the other existing buildings are. The existing training center and the existing administrative office wing. There, those are the buildings to be removed. So the building is approximately twenty or twenty-five feet further forward than the existing front wall of the office wing that's there now, to give you a sense of where it is on the property. On the north side, this is the driveway that comes in now, and that driveway will continue, except it'll add some loading docks on the front. All right? And so this is now loading on both sides, has differentiated from one fifty-five. One fifty-five on purpose, because of your ordinance and the residential zone to the north, only has loading on one side. This building, which is already facing the industrial Nice Pack south of us, and facing the loading dock for the next building. The driveway continues around the back to pick up the additional parking, which the ordinance is asking us for. Truthfully, most of this parking will never be used, because the kind of activity that's generated by this building isn't going to require that kind of parking. The other key element besides the parking around the, around the building, which then of course gives us access all the way around, is the drainage pond, drainage pond in the front, as part of the overall drainage system, which I'll let Steve describe in more detail. It's a wonderfully complicated but interesting solution to the drainage that comes down the hill and into the wetlands area that's immediately to our east, and includes additional stormwater retention in the front. The four elevations of the building, this is the long elevation facing Green, Green Bush, then this is the loading dock on the north side, and this is the additional loading dock. So you can see the height difference between the existing warehouse that's here and the new proposed warehouse that's there, right? And that's, that's important for us, because it brings us into the market that we believe exists now for warehousing. This kind of building is, is, is just old fashioned, and not what people are trying to accomplish. And any, any reasonable developer, our office having done warehouses for years, in addition to other products, hasn't done a warehouse that's this low probably in fifteen years. to other products, hasn't done a warehouse that's this low probably in fifteen years. The other elevations, this is the loading dock side with the canopy that goes over the six doors. And on the other side, there are six more doors from the north. The Hydrant building is forty feet, which is what your ordinance requires. I think there's a typo on one of our drawings that says eighty, but it's forty in your ordinance and it's forty that we are contemplating.
We have to check if it's in.
End of stories.
Correct.
Correct. And it's a one-story building, we're not putting in mezzanines, we're not doing anything else. It's simply, it's a high box, and that's the reason that we believe this is the appropriate newer use. Because that higher box, open space, probably robotic loading and unloading of pallets inside the building, all of those newer contemporary ways of using the volume that we can build. These are some partial color renderings, which in fact are unique to the first building, but are similar on both of the buildings. The canopy and the glass differentiation between walkway and simple straight wall of warehouse. And then where there is a small office component, where we have glass, the design is precast wall element, glass base and down to the ground. Where we have something to emphasize, either the corner of one building, which is on one fifty-five, or typical entryway for both of the buildings, that's the materials of brick, precast concrete and glass. And we're consistent on both of those buildings. Jumping to this, I just partially took a piece of the longer elevation because drawing the whole thing, it just goes on and on, and we wanted you to understand in more detail how the canopy, the glass, the windows, this is the elevation that's facing Green Bush, which in terms of the impact on the neighborhood and the, and what the project has its curb appeal in fact, is this elevation and the, and the one side of the, of the one fifty-five building. Now, one fifty-five. Here's the existing building that we just spoke about at one twenty-five. Here is the shared driveway with the appropriate easements to allow use of both of those to move around in and out and turn and get back out of it. There is a driveway on the north side, on the east side rather, over here, that's for parking and fire access, it's not for trucks. So we're not letting the trucks actually come out and use the residential side parking lot. That's in our mind, and we think in terms of the intent of your ordinance, you don't want them there, and we don't want them there either. So there's the, the small amount of parking here, the additional parking on the back, and then parking in the loading dock area itself. There is another small drainage pond in the front of that building, and there is the same kind of condition of drainage control coming down the hill, hitting a barrier that control will run off, which Steve will talk about. Again, the driveway goes all the way around and it connects to the existing, so we're not adding two driveways to end it out. We're actually using the existing driveway and sharing it with one twenty-five and adding one more driveway for the, the office component parking that might be on that north side. Again, the elevations, similar materials, we're not trying to make this look like a hodgepodge of different things on every corner, but make it feel like it's part of the campus of, of both of these buildings. It's always had a unique history because it was the Volkswagen headquarters for so many years and they had, so it was the fancy roof and, and all of the other elements that were there. It felt like a campus. And we've tried in this case, even though they are two independent parcels, that they do feel like they belong together rather than independent one to another. And this is back to our combined drawing again. Okay, I think that's the bigger, the big picture of the uses and the way we've located them on the site. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Oh, want to let the engineer do the?
Yes.
Steve, why don't you?
Sure. Steve Baracco, can you help me out here? Barry did a great job explaining the whole site plan layout. I'll just embellish slightly on the layout and I'll go more into detail about the grading and the drainage and everything we've done with the grading and tiller plant. As far as the overall set of this is the same as Barry's except flipped up and at a different scale. This shows the whole entirety of the site, one fifty-five. Again, as Barry said, both existing driveways we're reutilizing for the site and we're preparing, proposing a new one to the north and, north and west end of the site. We've shown fire turn radius all around the site. The largest truck in this town can make all the, all the proper, anywhere you're at, where you add to a, a commodity and access to anywhere around the building and at the proper part of the place. Here's just a larger detail showing the parking, Barry indicated all around the building. We have a total of, on this site, one hundred and fifty-eight spaces. We do need a variance for some spaces on site. As far as the others, the one fifty-five, we also have one hundred and fifty-four spaces available, plus all the loading docks, as Barry indicated for both sides, to use the same areas on both sites. There will be processes necessary for both sites to, for access and some, you know, we will provide detail on all those. It is a housekeeping item that we brought to the C O two last week. As far as, I'm going to go with the overall drainage hydrology so that it can be understood what is happening in the site. Okay, this, this is the, this is the overall hydrology of the area, this is the plaza on mountain. It's about sixty acres that run onto the site. And right now, there's a wetland that sits to the east end of the site behind the buildings. So this is just an old wall, so I'm going to flip up, but you can see all the drainage comes from the plaza on mountain, so it's down to this area. We have a study point just to the south of the site, a minor point over here to the south and west, and due west, we have another study point. So I'm going to use this, just the existing conditions, you can see the existing building. And we've broken it down to all the sub-areas on site, it's a very complicated site, we've done extensive testing at the site. We've defined out how the soils are, or the groundwater, depth of groundwater, percolation. We've had been in contact with the wetland delineator, Lee Tang. He delineated these wetlands back in two thousand and fifteen. The, it's interesting because when we did our heaps and parks all over the site, we didn't hit groundwater. And it's because the wetland is not, it's more plant-based than it is water-based. So as far as our drainage attenuation, for the one twenty-five site, we have a new underground system in the back. And by the way, this entire area, we've put in, we're proposing a three-foot-high wall to make sure that all the runoff patterns stay in the same normal pattern that they currently exist. And we also want to make sure, ensure that wetlands were not disturbed. Great, I don't even think you can disturb any on the site. So that's why we have a wall proposed all the way down along this area. And just a few key points to allow drains to run in and out.
That wall, that wall wall is only a side, the back of the building not visible from Green Bush.
Right. So as far as our attenuation, all said and done, we need an underground system in the back of the one twenty-five Green Bush building and a low-ground detention system in the front. Both have excellent permeability, so we're going to also use that for our worklotting attenuation. And the same systems, independent systems are in the, for the one fifty-five site, we have another little system in the back of the building to the south and east, and we also have another detention base in the front. Again, the percolation is excellent and the depth of groundwater is deep, it's like ten feet or so or more. So we've gotten a letter from a corporate over here approving the drainage subject condition. There's a bunch of housekeeping items from the town of Orange Town, D B W, not a problem. So we think we're ready to move forward with the application.
Now, do you have any parking spaces, can you say?
Uh, let me go back to the boards here. So for the one fifty-five site, we have a hundred and fifty-four spaces provided.
How many?
Hundred and fifty-four.
She's one.
Fifty-five site. And for the one twenty-five site, we have, sorry, four hundred and fifty-eight.
But how many employees do you expect in this building? You said it's going to be a minimal amount, so this is like an awful lot of cars.
Yeah, dominant employees.
This is a speculative building for the warehousing. Our, our understanding and our, our experience with this kind of warehousing building is one or less per thousand typically. But I'm going to let the traffic people come and speak to that more exactly.
Excuse me, please. All right, so you'd be willing to possibly land back some parking if you need?
Absolutely, of course.
Sure.
Currently below, we do require an ass.
Yes.
Your hydrids on that, we understand.
Okay, let me go through the consulting boards. I'll start off with the one twenty-five. Private review has no official comments. Office of Building Design and Planning, March tenth. Jane has seven. Number six, which I just, it's in here, but I just want to bring it out here when that gets done. For clarification purposes, provide an overall site plan layout for both properties in respect of uses that you've done, thank you.
Thank you.
Department of Environmental Management, Vanquisher Engineering, eight years, March eighth. Twenty-eight is the twenty-eight area. Twenty-eight, there's all four pages, not all one. I'm not going to read all of these notes out, they're all going to be put into the record. There are copies on the table, so if you are interested, we may available to you. With you doing that, just move the process along a little, so we're not here all night. But every item that is pertinent, all twenty-eight items will be put into the record and moved made part of the record and will be required, so nothing being left out if anybody feels that way. New York State Department of Transportation, I don't know where it was, is March seventh. All of these developments will generate significant amount of traffic that won't impact the state highway system. Please provide a traffic impact study, D I S, along with electronics, simple wireless files.
How do you expect the track segment to be?
We retained Dr. Collins, he seems to think it'll be finished in around a week or a week and a half. He has all the data on the area he's been consulting, all the projects he's been through throughout the year.
I'm going to be interested in the traffic study, if you expect, if we want any work done on the intersection, three oh three, and the immediate road approaching the project.
You should have that Mountain View and three oh three.
Correct, that intersection and up to the entrances of, of the project.
Sure. That would be county road, not state road.
So we'll, we'll see. Okay. Ten years here, off, in Toronto.
DeGeneres.
DeGeneres, I want to go. Sorry. I want to assert me, this patch is a review of one twenty-five, one fifty-five South Rainier Road. Drainage report was combined into one digit analysis, which is actually easier for you to do that way. Therefore, I include all counts in one letter and probably just distribute the same letter as part of the package for each site. Okay, and there it is by the bottom, it is the proposal has demonstrated potential significant adverse impacts with respect to the drains can be mitigated. We therefore recommend that twenty-five South Rainier Road and one fifty-five South Rainier Road plans be approved for drainage, subject to the above project comments and above ten. County of Orange Town Fire Prevention, oh, I ordered, I'm sorry. From Michael Webber, he has eight items. Rockland County Department of Planning, March fifth. They have sixteen items. And Rockland County Department of Health. They have three, monitoring well played on the survey as well as any official well points that remain open must be completed immediately, Rockland Force Department of Two, and Rockland County San Peters, both as a condition of resource evaluation of well from that already, they have seventeen natural hold three. Was it that, the well points, work of your move sealed with an eight-hour work base for questions about the commission program. Okay, Rockland County Highway Department, February twenty-first, that's three items. Rockland County Sewer, March sixth, two items. That's, that's all I have, I have the lead agent for Rockland County Highway, Z B A, Rockland County Health. That's all I have for one twenty-five, show of edit. Let me read in one fifty-five. Cross review and no additional comments. Okay, Jane Slaven, Department of Home and Urban Planning, March tenth. She has a, Department of Environmental Management, she has twenty-seven. Department of Planning. Okay, I'll, again, I'm going to mention ten years, DeGeneres letter in respect that the passion for review of one twenty-five, one fifty-five, three of the road, drainage report was combined into one digit analysis, which makes it easier to do that way, a bit more, a bit more comments in one letter. And again, they had to say ten conditions. Rockland County Planning, March eleventh, sixteen. Rockland Highway Department, March one, that's seven. Rockland County Health, two. Rockland County Sewer, two, March sixth, two. County of Orange Town, Fire Prevention, in respect to one fifty-five, South Rainier Road, has eight items, probably the same ones, but they're eight items. I also have the lead agent for Orange Town, D B A, and Rockland Health. Oh, okay. Oh, okay.
You're, oh, you started with the storage project, around the storage also?
That's correct.
For the runoff?
Yes.
Okay, so you're kind of, you're on.
Zero net, yes, sir.
What do you have listed as skill of control for those two ponds in the front?
They are actually also going to be infiltration basins because the percolation is so good here. The answer is we're going to train dry, but then we'll get a lot of tar.
Oh, all right, I see, which all paid retention, for retention, okay. Okay. The loading docks, the good ones, they ain't exterior or exterior?
Exterior.
Exterior, you don't need any variance on that.
Okay. Louie, I don't need skin to question.
The loading docks.
There's no platform outside the building, there are tax breaks for the building.
There's no platform outside the building, there are tax records for the building.
So there's the trails that we dropped into the building?
No, the trail is back up to the edge of the building.
They, they, they are gonna be external, planning board, zoning board, can't grant permission to do that.
Okay. Now, uh, right now you have all the trailers that we park there, I guess we are, you do fill in the conditions, but, uh... They're currently there, where's the trail that's gonna be parked now, if this is, uh, instructed?
We don't have, we don't know the uses of the tenants that will be there, our hope is that they're, the new, the new kinds of users require less storage of, of trails.
Those trails are there now, who's using them, who's storing them there?
My understanding is, it's part of one of the tenancies, it's, no, excuse me, let me ask my client to be sure, you give the right answer.
They have rented out spaces independent of the use of the building. Oh, okay, that's rented out to the company next door, okay, that's two, positive, and okay. Alright, they're still gonna be parking there, I don't know, there's not, and school buses, where are they gonna wind up?
That's off the site, when this is built, we don't, they'll be gone.
Okay, they'll be removed inside, okay. Now, okay, mentioned that the entrance, uh, exit of the troughs will be on the current, sort of shared.
Correct.
On Rainy Bush Road.
Correct. The existing driveway that's there.
Right, uh, this is my recommendation, I think the, uh, great idea, that the neighbors would like it, that, uh, there'd be a sign there, it says a stop sign, I know property, which you would know right turn out of the, uh, project.
We agree with that.
Okay, that would make it, that bring them.
Yeah, I have to go left to Mountain View and go out onto three oh three, without going through the district to the north. That's a good planning and, I don't know the problem for us.
Okay, so that would be a condition, that would, that would run back there. Okay. Alright, yeah, it's, uh, it's all one thing, the Rockland County, that, uh, the state planning area. On the EAF, okay, it goes to both sites now, indicate the sensitive archaeological site. Maybe it has something to do with, uh, any burial grounds out there, maybe there's burial grounds in the back?
It's an automatic, uh, uh, condition that comes up, uh, we can look into, but I don't think there's anything that's of any significance there. Uh, sometimes anything that's within a half mile or whatever, that triggers.
This might be, uh, along the, uh, boundaries of the state park, probably up the mountain there?
We'll verify.
Yeah, as far as I, I know, I think there's a, uh, maybe burial grounds there, and, uh, in that case, I'd like to know, you know, should be drawn on there, the boundaries of the, uh, burial grounds, and, uh, what's going to be done, or to protect them from, uh, uh, any disturbance. Okay, on both one twenty-five and one fifty-five, okay?
It's unlikely on one twenty-five only because that's mostly been covered by building over there.
No, no, going to the, but the east, east, I think that's where it is, on the east side of the building.
Okay.
Okay, pretty sure that's where it is.
We're gonna fall together.
Okay, uh, I guess that the other plan will show the proceedings?
Yes.
Yeah, I know why in the brief that, uh, Mr. Peters brought that up, is in the case of, uh, FISA property, when they divided it, the two FISA and the IRT. They had, it took another six or eight months before they could even start, because of, who was filed with this, they need the prosecutions, who's controlling the sewers, in case you sell the second building, you know, or the first building, okay? Sure, that would make it a lot easier for everybody. Okay, you've got to take care of the archaeological sites. Also, okay, you know, always the retaining wall, you said it's not gonna shift the flow of water?
No.
Okay, since it's gonna be there in the eastern side, uh, please indicate, or when you find out the limits of the archaeological sites there, uh, see if it's changing the flow of water that would disturb those sites.
It's not changing the flow of water.
Okay.
It's keeping the water in the same path, that's the purpose of it.
Alright, okay.
We wanted to ensure with the critical nature and sensitivity of the site, that we were not disturbing the path of water, nor its, uh, travel path outside.
Okay, and, uh, let me see, there's one other thing, just for, just for, uh, clarification, for people starting to ask some questions. On, uh, one fifty-five, uh, four hundred and twenty-seven space is required, you're only putting in a hundred and fifty-four, and on the one twenty-five, it's, uh, required by code, which have thirteen hundred and eighty-four, you're only proposing one fifty-eight, which is a lot less than what was required. Okay, no further at this time, and depending on what the, uh, public has, uh, thank you.
I think they'd be late, I'm sorry. Just a few, a lot of information here, so to show that it's here and everything, so a couple things that I highlighted, they have been talked about, which I'm clear. Looking at the, um, Department of Planning's document for one twenty-five, um, I think number six, um, you talk about kind of merging of the two parts, we got a bit of a picture of that, so we can clear on that now. I think the big thing is, um, number seven and eight deal with the truck parking. It says that right now, there's, um, over fifty trucks parked there, um, and you're not illustrating any truck parking on this new plan. And you just said that, right now, there's someone who rents space to park there, that's not part of the project, and we're not sure if it's really or not, so if there are trucks parking, where will they park?
Trucks parking are, are part of the tenancy, or trucks?
Yeah, well, of course.
We don't plan on having truck parking for anybody who's not part of the building.
What about the ones that are, where are they gonna park?
Loading docks.
The loading docks are, are for this kind of use typically, without a serious amount of excess parking for that kind of park, that, uh, truck parking. They come in, they unload, and they leave.
Well, actually, because, uh, liberate says, you know, reading it from the, again, this is the, uh, plan, it says, since the proposed uses to be warehousing, parking space and truck trailers must be provided. Passages from the trailer parking necessary for the site, so they're saying, as one of the conditions, you have to have parking if you're gonna have trucks there, so you have to satisfy that somehow, you have to get that removed.
Is that a statutory item, or is that a regular?
It's what they're telling us, what they're telling us.
It's their recommendation, but the recommendation to be where they park.
To me, they're saying must, sounds like a recommendation or not, they're saying must.
No, no, but he's saying that, that, he said that there's gonna be very little external away from the loading dock, that is the parking spot.
Right, they'll be standing.
And they're, they're telling me that based past history and warehousing means parking space of truck trailers, you've kind of said you're not sure who the second tenant's gonna be, what they're gonna use it for, so we kind of have to stick with, you know, what our experts are telling us until it's all applied. That's one choice, but, this here, and we have to vote on that at some point, um, and then Mr. Dell brought up number nine, that basically the parking they're proposing is about sixty-seven percent short of what's required, so I guess you're asking, maybe asking the variances on that?
That's the traffic consultant's report.
Yeah, that's, that's, of course, gonna be a big part of this project.
Sure.
Um, twelve and thirteen talks about a planting plan and a landscaping plan, um, of the number of trees that are being moved to do this project, and then, uh, what's we need to do?
Very few on one twenty-five, um, there are some, uh, they're not significant trees, but there'll be enough of them on one fifty-five, we'll make sure that's clear.
Yeah, so, and there's been a plan, detailed plan for both plants, and for the landscaping.
Yeah, there has been one submitted.
Okay.
To the town for those here.
I'm sure after one, we're very interested in that, when it comes up. Um, the last comment they had was sixteen, that they, um, they request not to review the variances that we need, but they have that right to request to review the variances before they're, they're granted. That's true?
Wait, I'm sorry.
No, they're saying, they request the opportunity to review any variances that may be needed, um, as required by the, you know, people.
Yes.
So, where will we, if we ever start to grant the variance, still we're subject to them approving it?
They're saying.
It does get circulated.
Okay, it circulates?
Yeah, they're saying we go to the zoning board, they would like to be able to, uh, be a part of that application, that's what they're saying.
Well, something you said earlier was that, I think it was about the loading docks, these are.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's a specific thing in our code.
Well, you said that both we or a zoning have the right to, to, um, give that variance.
Yes.
So that would be subject to the same condition, or the we gave the variance, or zoning would give the variance?
I think, I think what they mean, I, I could be correct, is, I think what they mean is that if this application is going to the zoning board, they wanna have a right to review.
Yeah, they didn't say zoning board, they said any variance, so we believe it's not a given variance, that is probably subject to the same terms.
I think the ZBA is the board that gives the variance.
I don't want to give variance anyway, you're saying, you mean that, uh, that we have that right, I want to show it clear.
According to the government.
Alright, and then the, uh, the other one on one fifty-five, I think if I can discuss that, any, the drainage port required for the settlement, which I think will happen at, and, uh, the traffic study as well, so, that's all I have right now.
Okay, thank you, chief. Thank you. Be interesting to see how the buses getting out there will affect your traffic, and, what do you call it, traffic work, or, or traffic cycle?
Traffic.
Uh, the...
Is that runoff?
Excuse me, I'm not sure I understand what you're asking. The buses that are there are part of a tenancy in the building that's being knocked down.
Yes.
So the buses won't be there.
The buses will be down.
Be down. We're bringing more trucks in for the loading, but the, you mentioned, you were specific on the buses, I just want to be sure, that the buses aren't gonna be there.
Yes.
Does it run into Sparkville Tree?
All the runoff, in the mountain behind, and you say all on this Sparkville Tree, which is why, more than anything, it's why we, well, it's overnaked disturbance, you need a swift anyway. So we've addressed that with, uh, detention basins and infiltration capability.
And listening to the woman earlier this evening from two twenty-six, well water is prevalent in that area as well?
Well, there, there are some, uh, uh, monitoring wells in this area, yes.
The residence to the north.
There is public water in the street, I wonder?
No.
I'm getting, I'm getting to, I'm getting somewhere with this. The, your detention basins, are you gonna have any oil water separators, because you are bringing in a lot of trucks now?
We can add some in, yeah, that's gonna be part of the process when I work with Bruce Peters.
Okay.
Well, I'll make a note of that, too.
Because what, I mean, with Mr. Young was alluding, I'm a little concerned with the wells of the surrounding property, on, whether it be in the southeast corner, we're concerned with all those wells. So we want to make sure that every water that would go into the ground is not gonna flow through these wells.
Yes, we'll make sure we have pre-treatments, sir.
That's all I have right now, I'm a little concerned about the size of that, northern building. Yeah, kind of in an odd shape, and to create more of a buffer, to make it a little smaller.
The offer is on this side.
Understood, but if you cut off, you'll create even more of a buffer. Just, let's wait and see what the public says.
I suspect, I suspect the buffer will be all the way to the other property, it's just my guess.
I didn't think I had it revolved in that.
Are the, is the entrances to the property, are they being redesigned at all, so you make like, I would like to see it impossible for a truck to make a right turn out of it, or whatever.
The current plan.
Force them where they just can't ignore a sign and make a right, you know?
Yeah, the current plan is utilizing two existing entrances on one twenty-five and a brand new entrance on one.
Right, but can, is it a way to redesign, or is it, where a truck coming exiting from the, uh, property cannot make a right to, uh, a new truck?
Can it be designed? Yes.
Right, well, I want you to design it, I guess that's what I'm saying.
We could show a curve, I want to restrict, uh, the movement of the traffic. I just went up to confer with the emergency services to make sure that they, you know, have to, have a need to make a right, like ambulance, uh, that would retreat into that area.
And I, I agree with Bill on, uh, you know, so you can make that, cut down that, of the building a little bit inside. Five, five.
Okay.
Uh, Shemel, you have anything additional right now?
Yeah. What's the, uh, buffer from the entered parking area?
A hundred feet.
A hundred feet?
Mm-hmm. That's the, that's the ordinance, requires no construction, no development, no parking, no anything, that's in the first hundred feet, and then the setback for the building is then taken from that, uh, restricted line. It's not, we, we couldn't look the building any closer to that than it would be, as if this were the side yard of, of a property line. Okay, so that, that's why the building starts back where it does.
Right now, it's just, it's up to the other feet. Yeah, it's a hundred feet from the parking?
From, no, from, here's the line, right here.
And then there's a hundred feet to our property line. Alright, that's, that's all.
Open ra- landscape, open space.
There's open space?
That's correct.
So what are you planning on putting in there to?
That's part of the landscape, like, there's a whole detail with how to install some of the natural growth that's there.
Thank you. The one, like I said, my only two concerns, well, again, is the size of the, uh, the car, uh, and also the, uh, ingress, egress on the two, uh, roads going in and out, and that area from, between the two areas, all the way out to the traffic light, that whole, uh, road configuration. Hopefully it'll come up with your track study, we'll get a better idea of what, what they propose, or things gonna happen. Okay, I'm gonna open it up to the public, um, there are a lot of people here that have a lot of views, and we want to hear all of them, um, please, um, I'm gonna allow you for three minutes, and three minutes only, because we have a lot of people, I want everybody to, to come up and comment. If what you say is the same thing as the person before you, just come up, state your name, and say, I agree with the person in front of me, or whatever, so we don't have to react the exact same information, okay? Um, so if you want, the first person, come on up, state your name, and your address.
Thank you.
Somebody for your time.
Excuse me. Is that no other person else?
No. He wants more time.
Oh, no, three, I got up to three minutes for everybody.
What's your name, sir?
My name is Peter Olaf, O-L-O-F-F, I live at two two seven, South Rainy Bush, which is the, uh, property, the immediate north of this project. Uh, like you, very concerned about the water, we have wells, we're close to where this is gonna be, and factually, I don't believe that, we're gonna be able to separate the garbage from the water supply. At some point over the next few years, it's gonna come in problem. You said, uh, I'm sorry, I don't have your name.
Yeah.
One of your comments was that you, uh, hope to be as little of a nuisance to the residential neighbors as possible, which at the beginning of your comments. Uh, I don't understand why, uh, two things, why, uh, you put this parking lot on the north side of the building, instead of on the east side, where there are no homes, where there's causal matter, where there's no legal partner. That's number one. Number two, I'd like to know, how much, uh, I don't even know how much acreage is, I'm sorry, I, um, I'm not well informed, I just found out about this by accident a few days ago, I haven't noticed. Um, how much is acreage, are you gonna pay most of it?
Acreage is what?
How much of the acreage is gonna be paid off?
Please can you answer the first, answer your first question? You wanna answer it all, PM, or you wanna move?
No.
You can have your own, okay, do me a favor, the rest, all your comments and questions to the board, please, and we'll be more than happy to get the answer.
You'll do this, sure, you'll do.
Yeah, I know, I understand that, and I understand that. Well, the reason we put the parking for the cars on the north end is that the truck loading will be on the south side, so there'll be no trucks on the north end, which is closer to the residential area.
Right, what about the east end?
He's talking about, that's a pond, that's a pond range, but I, I understand. The, the reason that we don't have them there is because of the constraint of the wetlands line that's, that endlies most of the property toward east, and we can't build on that space.
So, yeah, sure. Now, what, again, how many acres would be eight dollars?
What's the total coverage, Steve?
I'd have to calculate that. Do you want a few minutes to answer that question? It's going to take some time.
About four acres.
Four acres?
Sure, one hundred and twenty-eight is going to be three, and then the rest of the parking will be about a hundred acres plus. Hundred and twenty-eight thousand feet.
And how many acres is that?
Three.
And nothing more than that, maybe it'll be a pay.
A little more than that, because we're sharing some driveway, so maybe it's off by, you asked me to give a taste, right where?
I'm sorry, are the forty-eyed cars, they're going to be parked on the north side of the building, how many acres of that?
Not much. Forty cars.
I mean, we can, we're going to, we're going to write the questions down, and some of these are going to have to be answered.
Well, I didn't have the answers, I didn't have the problem.
I'm an old guy.
You've got three minutes, right, so, a little bit more, okay?
Fine. The answer to that question is approximately a half acre of the parking north of the building. The, the seventy-four cars that are here is going to be a little, a half acre slightly more.
And, and, and what, is this truck people, and that's going to be going on what?
I don't expect it, though, I don't know that enough.
Well, is that?
But I, I don't know the answer, you asked me, so, well, that may be, but I'm not going to say no, because I don't know the answer.
Well, the same company, I assume they're not going to go seven to seven.
They're not, they're getting new tenants, and they don't know who the tenants are at that time. At the time of the new tenants that come in, they have to come in front of the boards for different variations, different uses of everything else.
Who's the tenants now, sir?
From what I understand, the tenants, like the buses, will be leaving.
The buses are gone, yes.
Okay, and I think somebody, I think the gentleman said some of the other tenants will be leaving, I don't know, but in respect to the new tenants that have come in, they have to come before here for performance standards, and at that time, we'll find out the hours of operation. So if he doesn't know who the tenants are, he can't tell you the hours of operation.
I agree, I agree, but I thought they knew who the tenants were.
So that's your three minutes, okay? This, did I get the final, this is coming back a couple more times?
Have you got the, you're going to have other the?
Oh, definitely, definitely. Go ahead, please, please do. Please do.
Good night, Mr. Young. To answer the question about the acreage up here, it's about forty-five acres.
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
Forty-five acres up here, the forty acre, forty lot, the parking lot, that is requiring though, that's the answer to that. And like ours, it's about forty.
Next.
Hi, what's your name?
Elizabeth Dudley.
I'm sorry?
Elizabeth Dudley, D-U-D-L-Y.
Right, W-D-U-D-L-Y, and your address?
Two fifty South Green Bush Road. Um, do you mind my three minutes, I just had some housekeeping, the sound system in here is actually atrocious, atrocious. And the fact that it's ten forty-five, I mean, how do we get babysitters go to work and do all this stuff, it should be better planned, I know it's not, you guys might as well put that on the record, but this should be its own easy, it's that one, this is. Okay, I would like to start my three minutes now. I live on the corner of Spruce Street and Green Bush. There's approximately about thirty children on South Green Bush and Spruce Street. I understand what they're talking about, how the bus, the trucks are leaving, how about how the trucks get there? I sit and I watch, day after day, I have pictures from today of trucks coming over Clausen Mountain Road, and coming through the intersection in either A, backing up, which is completely unsafe, and then to turn, and I've seen trucks to actually take out our bridge, to then go to this location. This is current people going back. I see people come down and go through, and then go through Spruce Street, and they disregard the signs. I see trucks do U-turns, okay? My kid stops, my kid's bus stop is on the corner, I can't even get the town to get a crosswalk there. I can't get the town to put a stop sign there, we have thirty children, I can't even walk on my own road, the road is crumbling, it's crumbling in to the side, there's no place to put more trucks on this road, it's absolutely ludicrous. I can't even believe that we're considering this, okay, I, it just, you know, zoning outdated, let me guess, when was this application, two thousand and four? Because that's like everything that happens, linen choice, everything else, it's absolutely ridiculous. I would like an environmental impact study, I want to know about the wildlife, the bass, there's a lot of bass, I sit on my deck, I watch them all the time. I, the eagles, I want to know who is doing the traffic study, who were they hired by, do, are you, are they trusted by you? Okay, not them, you, I want you to trust them. I would also like the traffic study to include Spruce Street and Clausen Mountain Road in that, there's nice path, there's absolute mayhem when we have the eighteen-wheelers coming from this location, and the nice application, and all the employers letting off, you can't even get through them. It's taking ten minutes per lane, there's no turn signal at the light, when you go up to the light, the trucks that have to go right onto three oh three actually cut off and go over the sidewalk. So as a pedestrian, it's completely unsafe, I can't even have my kids walk to go get an ice pop across the street. I mean, where, what are we living in, I mean, we moved here to have the quality of life, having this is just out of the question, and I think that you have to really take a look at this, and look at our zoning, and take a minute to just get some normalcy about all these shows. Two schools, Tappan Zee High School, Cottage Lane, less than a mile, all the kids on the buses.
That's you, ma'am, thank you very much.
We're on St. Street. Enrica, Hodorak Kelly.
Wait, talk a little louder, and I can't hear you.
Enrica.
Enrica.
Hodorak.
She just called your last name.
H-O-D-O-R-U-K, Kelly. And I live Catty Corner, to the woman that just called.
Who's who just?
Two six seven, Green Bush. And everything that she says is exactly right, what I was thinking is, can you, as well as not allowing the trucks to make a right turn out, how about if they only can make a right turn in? So they cannot come to the facility from north.
I think that the, whomever the tenants are, if they're getting product brought into them, I think they really have difficult, it's going to be a problem. I mean, they can say, you've got to come this way, and this way, I don't think they can make trucks come a certain way, they can turn around, and if the same company comes all the time, and it's the same drivers, they can say, listen, this is where you got to go. What we're trying to do, if this continue, you know, project continues, is make sure that they do not turn right on, on the road and go off that way, where they all make a left-hand turn, and we're right out to three oh three, okay?
Agreed.
So we know that there's a concern there, and we're, we're trying to address.
Agreed, but it's the same thing, if they're coming into the property, because...
Here we don't have any control, but that's part of the problem.
Can you make a right turn in, can you make a right turn in, on roads?
It's county road.
The two things, they do come flying down Clausen Mountain.
We understand, I understand.
It's, it is dangerous.
Okay, yes, sir.
Name is Barry, last name is Sei, T-E-S, two ten South Green Bush Street, directly across Route one fifty-five, project. My driveway is directly in front of the driveway that they are putting on the north side of that, to enter that, not good, as far as I'm concerned, not pretty, not pretty. It's pretty looking at the mountain instead of a forty-foot wall that's situated eighty feet from the street, can you confirm that, can you confirm that, Chris? But the answer to your question, have a contaminated well, it's oversight by New York State D E P, they come in every quarter, test it. I do not want that sort of turned around anymore, and have faith in the engineering system, he's already testified here today, it's a complicated site, okay? My neighbor also testified, I believe, earlier when we were here, but I believe you must more refer to her, Grincheros, also have a, this is a property to the north, also have a contaminated well. That's a real concern to me. What we haven't heard here, they describe these wonderful properties, the scale of them, the scale of these properties are incredible, do we realize this is nineteen million cubic square feet of warehouse? Our architect testified that it's a high-volume warehouse, high-volume warehouse, of nineteen million square feet. A truckload is, is, is roughly an eighteen-wheeler, fifty-three footer, is just shy of four thousand square feet. You're talking about, in this operation, I was here before you, I believe April of two thousand and eighteen, we talked about a no-right turn sign then, and you put it into the resolution, never was here to, okay? So if we could put that into the record, so they've already committed to something that they haven't done on a simple thing, but on a complicated project like this, I can imagine what has gone on here. I need to, and I'd like to have New York State D E C, D E P, excuse me, weigh in on their thoughts in terms of my contaminated well, and how much worse it possibly could be. But we're talking about thousands of trucks potentially, in a high-volume situation, and as Liz testified too, there's no control. The control is approving this project, that's the controller, it's going to control those trucks going up South Green Bush in front of my house, it gets narrower, I asked you, I heard you ask me about the width, you're concerned about that. Well, trust me, those trucks can through that S-turn, not pretty, it's going to be an accident one day, no doubt about it, there's no control over it, the control is whether this project goes or not. And the amount of volume, when we look at the zoning overlay, which I believe, and it's just, I only have a few minutes here, right? The zoning, the zoning overlay of three oh three that was passed prohibits a project like this, and I can't reference anything in this, 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 this thing here today, but I believe it does. This is not light industrial as the zoning maps indicate, it's far from it, across the street, inertia switch, that's the definition of light industrial. They can't even tell you about parking with the trailers, you're talking about potentially thousands of trailers. So my suggest, my suggestion here today is, we have a lot of agencies that have got to get contacted on this, there's a lot of implications, and we need a moratorium of at least a year to have all the agencies of the state, and the county, and the town weigh in on a project that's going to be of this magnitude, nineteen million plus cubic square feet.
Yes, sir.
Good evening, my name is Erin Connolly, C-O-N-N-O-L-L-Y, I live at two two eight South Green Bush Road, right around the bend, past these people's home. And I can't agree enough with what Liz and this gentleman said, I, Mary, I believe, why, you want to get this traffic study done, you can get it done in the next week, you can come lodge with me, all of you, you can come to my house, and you will have your answers solidified right there. It doesn't matter when I go to work in the morning, the trucks are pulling out, I know the buses won't be there, so they won't be pulling out, but they're pulling out, and there's traffic from everybody else from work. Coming home, the same thing, my kids' buses, I have children, so my number one priority here is not their safety. I moved to South Orange County because it's a wonderful community, and it's, I love the emergency, I, I love the, all the response teams and everything, but I'm so disheartened to think that this is even a proposal. I, I, besides the traffic study, which is just, I thought it even goes through my bottle. So the safety, the noise, I can't even imagine what the noise is going to be like with the volume, as you stated before, of all these trucks. I know you mentioned too about curb appeal, and I appreciate your thought in making nice curb appeal, I couldn't care less about curb appeal, my own curb appeal there, curb appeal is amazing, that's not a, that's not enlightening me in this project. Campus feel and all that, not, not a concern, I think the noise, the traffic, the roads, like Liz said, South Green Bush looks like a war zone right now, potholes everywhere. My kids, you know, forget my kids ever, even though it's a double yellow line, I'm not concerned, ah, my girls, they never brought them ride their bike because of the unsafe conditions that exist now with the trucks that are in the existing one twenty-five, or whatever number the building is. There's trucks, there's cam, there's trailers, there's buses, there's deer, you name it, and, you know, and the well water too, I mean, this is just a no-go area. This is not the residential area that warrants a factory of this volume, end of story.
It's Erin Bosley, at two twenty South Green Bush Road.
Wait a minute, what's your address then?
Two twenty.
Two twenty, okay, great.
As discussed, one fifty-five is on the district border, not just on the north end, the east side, but also the west side. That's both table note thirteen regarding district boundary lots explains, quote, the landscape screening shall be approved by the board prior to the issuance of a building permit, such screening must provide an opaque screen during the entire year. The new use that is sufficiently detrimental to adjoining surrounding properties, which cannot be screened to protect property values adjoining and surrounding, the proposal shall not be permitted, end of quote. Currently, there's no provision for screening this property stated above, and see how it could be possible given the forty-foot height. Both table note two explains that light industrial budding R forty must have a one hundred-foot buffer, the buffer is not in place on the west side. Article five point one three explains that lots within twenty-five feet of the district boundary must conform to building height rules in the budding R forty zone, this does not conform, the buildings are forty feet tall and fifty-seven feet from the lot line. According to article five point one one, for a secondary street, thirty-five feet from the center line to South Green Bush Road is the lot line, and should have a hundred-foot residential buffer from there, it doesn't, the buildings are fifty-seven feet from there. If Green Bush is to become classified as a major street, it might seem logical to give the amount of trucks that are going to be traveling on it, that would push it even further back. Additionally, the drainage basins are turning in the buffer zone. The existing trucking hub is currently in violation of article four point two seven, direct light rays are highly visible to adjacent lots from stating type light fixtures, the proposal will also be in violation for lighting plans. Additionally, the covered dairy cows on the plains are wrong and don't account for a fifty percent rule on the significant amount of wetlands and steep mountains that on the property. The measurements used for the cows themselves also appear to be incorrect. It won't be possible to build retaining walls in parking areas directly flooding the existing wetlands and not diminish them without buffer area. These buildings, well, directly along the wetlands will also cause flooding and flooding the north, at the flooding northern residential lots. The property also directly blocks the Route three oh three overlay zone on the other side, and I want to mention some notes about the stated intention of that zone. Route three oh three overlay zoning district code names, quote, unique and singular factors that deserve considerable recognition, including, now, you have in Green Bush Road by name epitomize the scenic nature of Route three oh three, overshadowed as it is by Gulf of Mountain. If the project is built, no visitor on Mountain View would ever have a Mountain view. Same for Green Bush Road, or for the Route three oh three intersection, or for the historic graveyard across the street, it would block the senior rock from view of the carter as well. It also further law violates the stated legislative intent of this section, provision A to promote pedestrian and vehicular safety in Route three oh three carter, to limit the proliferation of truck traffic. We already discussed eighteen-wheelers coming out of Mountain View onto three oh three. It violates almost all the legislative intent provisions of that code. It doesn't moderate and control traffic number three oh three, it doesn't promote the most desirable use of land in due sheds, it doesn't foster civic pride or promote enjoyment of the town's scenic qualities. It doesn't protect and buffer the due shade of the palisades, including Clausen Mountain, it doesn't encourage open space preservation environmental stewardship.
Circ- kind of circuit, wipe it out.
Yeah, this project contradicts the stated goals of the community I just mentioned, I understand that it's also a goal for the town and the property owners to use this land for its own purpose, but that must follow the consequences, and there are many opportunities for the landowners to accomplish those goals without any violation. Lastly, I was wondering if you could tell me when the zoning changed from L I O to L I, because the zoning in two thousand and eleven's comprehensive review was L I O, and that wouldn't allow us to have.
Do you have any idea what zone we're testing? Anybody else?
Bye, Larry Vale, three eighty-nine Kings Highway, Japan.
Five, Larry Vale, three eighty-nine Kings Highway, Japan. Just for the sake of brevity, many of the stormwater and Spark Hill Creek issues I'm going to just mention, I'll be representing the Spark Hill Creek Watershed Alliance, but I have some personal things there too, and I think you'll recognize which are which. The first one is actually a personal thing. I agree with all the truck traffic issues that the local residents know better than I do, but I want to make sure that you're aware that last year, the town of Orange Town established a bicycle plan for root, safe routes through Orange Town, and Green Bush Road is one of those routes. And the idea is to avoid using route three oh three, which is extremely dangerous, to foster that plan up, you know, where Green Bush meets three oh three way up north there, right by Paul Valentine's, you know. There's now a path that Orange Town has constructed that connects Green Bush to the rest of, to North Green Bush Road. So the whole idea is you can go basically from Bittermont to almost the town line on a bicycle in a fairly safe way. I want you to consider how this plan would affect that activity. I saw the comments by Bruce Peters on stormwater pollution protection plan being required for the one fifty-five site. I haven't seen the comments that he made. I'm going to assume, unless you tell me during this meeting, that he required a stormwater protection plan for both sites.
It was an overall plan that covers both of them?
Yeah, yeah.
Both lots, one fifty-five and one twenty-five.
Right, right.
It was an overall drainage plan.
Okay, so, and basically, he recommended on the verbiage I saw, that it followed the New York State stormwater guidance, you know, the green infrastructure, right? So I just want to make sure that, I like the idea that the applicant said about having infiltration basins, not detention basins. I noticed on the plan it does say detention. So if, I mean, I'm counting on you guys to really police the intent of this. You know, Bruce Peters can make recommendations, but you guys are the ones that approve. So there've been a lot of projects recently, as you know, right adjacent to the Spark Hill Creek, and these application of green infrastructure is really important, and I just want to stress how important that is to return the stormwater into the ground. In terms of those basin plannings, I noticed that Ms. Ghost actually was the applicant, I mean, the designer, so maybe that's why she left.
She has to.
Yeah, so, and that's fine. But I didn't see any landscape plan, and maybe this is just preliminary for those detention basins, and maybe that'll be addressed by Ednbor, but I would like to, if, should this project actually, you know, get going, I would like to see landscaping in the detention basins themselves, because these things can be like muddy pits, or they can look beautiful. Okay? Thank you. So, yeah, I guess the last comment I have is that we need, I think it's pretty obvious this needs a super review, and you'll be doing the long form. Thank you.
Thank you.
In question, if you can just answer for somebody not remembering who, is respect to the zoning district. There were planning board decision, which was dated June ninth, two thousand and four, and at that time, it says, "The site is located at one twenty-five, South Green Bush Road, Orange Town, Rockland County, New York, and is shown on a tax map as seventy-four dash zero seven, block one, lot fifteen, and an L I zone." Oh, is that? Okay, I just wanted, I wanted to ask you a question.
Okay, yes.
Elizabeth, last name P A S K O W S K I, two ninety-one, South Green Bush Road. I don't, I have something new to say. I don't, as immigrants in the well water, that end of Green Bush Road does not have a public water supply. Those houses that were built, those new houses, that was why we found the contaminated wells. I live on the other side of Spruce Street, and all our wells had to be tested. On the other side of Spruce Street, we do have public water, and some of the contaminated people were able to hook into the public supply, but on this side, there is no public supply. So that's it for one. The other thing was, when you mentioned the artifacts, and you were talking about the Native American, I didn't realize that, but I was thinking maybe it was a reference to that cemetery that's directly across the street from this proposed site. There's a cemetery that dates back to like the seventeen hundreds.
That is an addition to that. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Steve Del Savio, two sixty-two Trenton Place, Orangeburg. In regards to the, I hate to call you, but in regards to the L I O versus the L I, wouldn't make a difference anyway.
Height building, it doesn't make a difference.
Well, okay, please, we choose to be dressing up on the sauce, please.
Relation to that, Subaru was just approved, a one hundred and fifty thousand square foot warehouse, addition to an existing one hundred and fifty thousand square foot warehouse, which is now three hundred thousand square feet. They got approved for twelve outdoor loading docks and a height of thirty-eight feet, where they're only allowed twenty-five feet. They got variances in an L I O. So I'm just saying, I don't think you guys give a hoot whether it's an L I O or an L I. Not only is Subaru there, but Clowns is there. I need everybody in the crowd here to drive by Corporate Drive one day, go through there, and go through Ram Lan Road, and see the size, the monstrosities that have been put in, in an L I O. Warehouses that aren't approved in L I Os, okay? You have Clowns there, Celtic, Dynamic, who is coming in later on for something else they want to do, Crestron is huge, Ussis, and Subaru, okay? Also, I just want to say in reference to, I'm glad the man mentioned that he's happy that the building's going to be low relative to the length of the building. That's really, you know, a classy move. Also, that even though he first started saying that the traffic is not going to be any more traffic, later on, he says, "The traffic generated will be moved between the two buildings." One hand, he says no traffic, then the traffic that's going to be generated is going to go between the two buildings. I want to tell you guys, I think you did say you're going to have a traffic report done on this one?
Yes.
Because you didn't do it on Subaru, which is Blaisdell Road, a narrow road where sooner or later it'll happen, okay? Tractor trailers, fight a fifty a day coming in and out for all these crazy places over there. Also, I was wondering about the fire in here. Is there, is there a road around the entire building? Around the whole?
Fire, comments on that, and there is a road that satisfies the firewall.
So they have three sides of a fire. Fourth side of the building doesn't have a road. So look at your planning board meeting, November eighteenth, when you approved Subaru, and you guys could have stuck up for the residents, you gave them a road in the back, and you said it's a fire code. I guess it's not a fire code here.
It's four roads.
It's all the way around.
I thought you said on one side, there is all the way around. There is a road going around, okay? Okay.
Subaru is on Ram Lan Road, not Blaisdell.
Well, yeah.
Ram Lan Road is a wide road, it's at least four, it explains why.
Right, and they come out of Blaisdell, which is not.
And it's an industrial park.
It's not an industrial park. It's not an industrial park.
Corporate park.
Corporate park. We're, 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 we're,[1249.12]
I actually kept the owl frozen because I felt I couldn't leave it there. And I tried to make calls to the D.C. to see what I could do about it. I haven't gotten any calls back yet, but, so, that terrifies me to think about what else is going to be affected by this. It is adjuting to the park plans there, which is very, very important, there's an access to the park as well. I'm also interested, if you can, please read the Rockland County Highway Department notes on this matter.
Rockland County, I am sent by, uh, March first. Rockland County, since the county board is in danger, site plan showing the designated street line is for Rockland County official Matt. Uh, which detailed from the bill by the House of Representatives shall have to consider an offer of gratuitous dedication of the area between designated street lines and existing town right away in front of the property on South Greenwood Road to the county of Rockland for the inclusion of the county highway system. The applicant shall have to provide site distance calculation. Drainage reports required for the proposed development. The applicant will have to make sure that the proposed drainage system for the new highway satisfies the drainage rules that shall be known yet increased with equal or obvious charge from the site at all designated points. Since the proposed development is expected to change the traffic conditions on the county highway, traffic impact studies required to determine the potential effects on the traffic condition. mitigating measures would have to be proposed for any adverse impacts. Six, traffic control signs may be required at the drive. Seven, the applicant shall provide sufficient operating area for traffic entering the site to prevent spillback through to South Greenwood Road. If parking spaces near the driveway entrance may be eliminated or prevent traffic spillback. In fact, if there are any problems, all such as such, not good. Okay?
Anybody else? Sure. Joe Dudley. Joe Dudley, two fifty South Green Bush Road.
D U D, L U Y. I'm sorry, what's the number, two fifty?
Two fifty, South Green Bush, corner of Bruce and North South Green Bush. Just, I just want to, basically, I'm going to agree with the people what they've been saying so far about the traffic issues. I do have issues also with the diesel fumes. And if you're parking in this area, the amount of trucks that they're talking about, I don't know if there's any way they can clean this water that's running down that hill. I mean, it's a tremendous amount of water, it creeps all over the area, coming down from that hill. I don't see how they can clear the diesel fumes, especially if they're idling, waiting to drop their material off, moving forward, you know, there's not enough parking. The variances have half the parking, they're putting half the space, you know, with these monstrosity buildings. They're going to block the view of that mountain. The kids have been, I mean, it's graffiti, I guess. But they've been writing the year, they graduate on the building since who knows when. You know, and now you're going to put a forty-foot building there, you're not going to be able to see that from three oh three. You don't have to be at the high school to see that mountain. I just, I just think it affects the quality of life in the town, and it's not necessary. There's no need to have this much trucking here. This is a residential area, whatever the zoning says. People live there, there's new houses have been built in two thousand and four. There's been a lot of private buildings that have gone up because the area's popular, good neighborhood, good schools. And, you know, I mean, I just think that it just defeats the whole purpose of that. Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Lian, Richera.
Go ahead, listen.
R I N C H I B R A, two thirty-one Green Bush. And I just want to say that I, all of the comments made by everyone, and being, and I'd like to close with, just quoting from the Blue River Overlay Zone document that I found linked to the town of Orange Town website, that states, "The Overlay Zone District will encourage land use, decision-making in accordance with the public interest, protection of private property rights, and the public good. It will provide for economic, social, and aesthetic advantages of orderly development through harmonious groupings of compatible and complementary land uses and the application of appropriate development standards." Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Vincent Lucci, twenty-eighth Fergal Lane, Orangeburg, New York.
Wait, Vincent, you go on to the next.
Vincent. That's V E L L U C C I.
V E L L, P E L L.
U C C I.
U C C I, and your address.
Twenty-eighth Fergal Lane, Orangeburg, New York.
Okay, go ahead, Vincent.
As you can see, I don't live in Green Bush Road. But I'm here because I almost bought a house here, definitely years ago. And I thank God that I didn't, because if you have this to offer, there's something wrong with Orange Town. This is not the way it should be, this is a place where people live. You don't put twenty-six bays over there, where people are living with kids and everything else. So I agree with everything everybody said. Thank you.
Vanessa Lappens, six fifty-nine Western Highway.
Spell Lappens for me.
L A P S and Peter, I N S.
And I'm sorry, what's the number again?
Six fifty-nine Western Highway.
Go ahead.
Big box warehouse, heavy trucks, these were the words used here tonight. It's a giant project, and to simply mail letters to a small group of people within a two-hundred-foot radius with a tiny snippet of information with little wheel notice relative to project size is lawful but reprehensible. A series of projects have been approved that seem charitably ill-advised, guaranteed to turn Orange Town into a trucking corridor and a world of warehouses. It's not what we wanted, and it's not where we want to live. The town has not really been able to weigh in, except when they catch wind of this. The poor people on Murphy Court, the poor people who live on Western Highway to see the olf-plastic monstrosity behind St. Catherine's. The poor people who have to deal with Subaru endlessly coming back. The guy who wants his translucent lights, he wants no lights, is what he wants. It's enough, this is a home, it's not a place for warehouses. I agree with everything else that's been said here tonight, this project is the wrong project for our town. Thank you.
Hello, Heather Gurley, two oh two Holbert Street in Pearl River.
Wait, 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 two oh two, was it?
Yeah. I just wanted to know a couple of answers to, if this LLC has filed and submitted paperwork with the town for full disclosure, which is required by Orange Town now. Can you ask the applicant if they will be applying for a pilot agreement with the town and the I D A? I think residents have a right to know how it would impact the tax base. Is, I understand that there is not a tenant yet. So do we have any idea how many loading docks will be here? I know that it seems like there will be open ones, so I just, for the record, would request that they go to the Z P A for all the loading dock variances, as Lynn and Joyce was sent to the Z P A. In regards to the woman before me saying the two-hundred-foot radius of notification, do we know why it was not five-hundred-feet radius of abutting property owners? And why didn't that radius apply, as it did with, it was changed, I believe, after Hillside Project in Pearl River? So if somebody could please answer that, maybe attorney could answer that. Has the applicant submitted a long-form E A F? I don't believe they have, which is what was said earlier, but I'm requesting that a long E A F be submitted. And if the board disagrees, why would you disagree that they should not submit a long form? I'd like to know how many trucks are anticipated. How can an efficient and accurate and true traffic study be completed when we don't even know what kind of business is going in? I mean, anything submitted before we know the use, an anticipated number of trucks is illegitimate, in my opinion. And I just want to remind the board that, this board, that the town board, though it's a separate board in the town, but with four of the five same board members, council members on the board now as of two thousand and seventeen, passed a memorializing resolution where four out of five present members, council members, in July of two thousand and seventeen, which opposed the new planet energy facility in Stony Point. And a major issue why they were opposing it was tractor-trailer traffic potentially up and down Route three oh three through Orange Town. This should be considered in making any decision. I'd like to know if manufacturing is being considered as a proposed intent of the property owners. And I don't know if this was covered, but has a SWIFT been submitted for this application? And will they need to submit that? For the initial construction, what equipment will be installed on the roof? And do these two warehouses physically connect, or are they separate just next to each other? I wasn't sure about that. And that's it, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Hi, I'm Marty Scitels.
Spell your last name for me, ma'am.
S C I T L E S, S T I T L E S. And I'm at two ten South Green Bush Road, Orangeburg. I just wanted to say, when we moved here, two thousand and six, I had no idea that anything would be going on across the street from us. We're the first house that, where the residential area starts. So we're going to get the brunt of it all. From what I see, that the driveway is right in front of our driveway. To me, I think with all the cars, they said it's not purely trucks, but there's going to be a lot of cars. We don't need that. Why do we need that? If I knew that, there would be a warehouse there, we would never have moved. This will be diminishing our property also. So I think everybody needs to think twice about doing this, it's a wrong move.
Yep.
Anyone else? Yes, sir. Second, everybody. Scottsboro, forty-two Yale Tower, S K U R A.
Wait, 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 what? Spell again.
S K U R A.
And your address.
Forty-two Yale.
Oh, right, I remember, last time, yeah.
I just want to back up everything everybody has to say here. I just want to know if they have, if they have a way around the entire building, what's to stop them from driving the trucks around? Who's going to stop them? I also want to know who owns the company and what tenants are going to be, or what's involved. We need to have something, how are we going to stop the turn of some tax shelter too? When people are running billions of dollars through the place and we're getting out of the front. Back here.
Vincent Lucci, one oh six Bruce Street, Lowell.
Is it L U P I?
L U P I.
And what was the number again?
One zero six.
What's zero six?
They mentioned extensively about permeability of the soil. Well, I'd like to know how they're going to determine where that water goes once it gets into the ground? What direction it goes into? Because I don't know of a way that they can determine which way groundwater travels. So the wells are a concern, Spark Hill Creek is a huge concern. It's a D E C designated trout spawning stream, it's also a Hudson River estuary. So huge concern there for environmental issues. So I think a very extensive environmental study should be done prior to approving anything like this. Also, they're talking about the permeability, but I'd like to know about the non-permeable surfaces like roofs, how many square feet, and how they determine that all that water that's going to come from all those non-permeable surfaces are going to be able to get into our groundwater, which is excessive. And that's actually going to make it into every well watered. And many of the public water, but if you get United Water, it comes from water wells that are owned by United Water. So it's still getting into our water, even if we're getting water from the municipalities. So that's a huge concern as well. And going back to traffic, we mentioned making left turns only, and there's a concern of people not adhering to the rule, what they're assigned there. They could put directional curbing, so there is an alternative to force them to go south. And in addition to that, any vehicles coming south, if the entrance is also, has directional curbing, it would prevent them from making less in there. So I think all entries should be coming north. So anybody entering the facility should have to come off three oh three onto Green Bush. And that's if you approve anything, which this should never be approved. Thank you. I would like to add one other thing. If this, if this is to be approved at any level, is there any way that you could force the applicant to put in curbing?
There's a lot of things we can do.
Beyond the scope of their site, including sidewalks? It's mentioned how many children are in the area, bicyclists, and why we won't make it more accessible to the big, large people.
Hopefully, this will all come up with a traffic study, we'll find out from that. Yes, sir.
My name is Watson Morgan, I live at currently one oh five Corporate Village in Orangeburg. I work in a manufacturing plant across the street that was backed in Dickinson and then a number of other things. It's now a church. We have two bays, but my concern, and I've worked for forty, fifty years in that, right in that pod, right there. And Mountain View, my concern is trucks, dieseling, we had a policy at our place, we only have two bays. And when a truck, it turned off. My concern is the stacking of trucks that are waiting to be serviced. Hopefully, the traffic study will have something to do with that. But when the trucks are loading, fifty-three, it's now fifty-three foot, it used to be forty foot. Idling, county has idling things which are not enforced anywhere. As a little point, there's usually five or six trucks that are waiting for whatever reason, and they're running twenty-four hours a day, at night, at night stop behind one, running till three o'clock in the morning. So those five trucks, a lot of companies don't allow you to come into the area until you're to be served. It sounds like a very burdensome, and the amount of space, the amount of bays. Somebody say thirty-six, is that what the bays?
Thirty new ones.
Excuse me?
Thirty new ones, twenty-three existing.
Okay, fifty-three. So that's fifty-three, so that's a lot of trucks, waiting, stopping. I think the idling in Rockland County is supposed to be three minutes, not adhered to. This kind of mega project has to be adhered to. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Do you have a motion to close public? Mr. Bond, have a second. Mr. Mendel, all favor? Okay.
Do we have any idea how many trucks a building like this, or these two buildings, if they're maximum full?
We're going to leave that to the traffic, can we give you a better answer than that?
We use bays, we can't hear, we're down in the meeting, if you want to talk, please cross that.
I think with the latest in the night, not having traffic study on, we'll request a continuation until we get that information.
He's requesting both of you. Explain in just a second.
That's a good idea.
Okay. The attorney says, Nina, there was not a traffic study, and I think the board would be asking for it anyway. He's asking for a continuation, so at this point, there will be no decision whatsoever. The applicant is going to, knows of information that we're looking for, the local traffic study, that they leave, and the next meeting, we will have further information. And that, we're going to make a better judgment on this, so he's formally asking for a continuation.
Do you think? Do you think?
No, 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 I, I.
Well, I don't know where you're going to be coming back again.
Is that good for traffic study? I'm going to speak to Dr. Collins when I know what he knows.
Yes, somebody has to know about that.
Okay, so I was scheduled. Yeah, I'm going to pay first, it's not, it became very.
Don't we get another notice? Don't we get another notice?
Yeah, because we don't know what meeting is going on.
Can you let more people handle that, please?
No, I'm going to let the same people know that you're on the list.
How can we be notified? Email us, how can we?
Letter.
There's people that didn't get one.
Yeah, we have a letter yesterday. It's probably not yesterday, we are right there in agreement.
I'm sure House Wayne, I didn't get it, I'm going to try.
Excuse me, please, we're trying to get, please go outside.
Sir, we have other business?
No other business, we have, since then, we're thirteen.
Hey, everybody, now I'm getting a little annoyed. We've been very courteous while this meeting's going on, we allow everybody to say what they want. Nobody's been cut off, we've got another hour of meeting here, we want to get it done. Please go outside and walk, I don't like talking like this, but evidently, the fourth time, maybe you'll listen.
This is on the record, that's what you're saying.
Mike.
Okay. I have a motion to accept February seventeenth minute?
Thirteen.
Thirteen minutes.
With the addition of Rex.
I was not here.
With the addition of Rex comments on that one.
Proper Rex comments.
I'll second that.
Over, Roger. Who's second?
Second.
I'll second.